All right, well, it's 6:00 P. M., so we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for joining this evening for the July 20th Lewisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. Because of COVID-19, the meeting's being held electronically and is being recorded. We request permission to speak during public comment periods, and attendee can raise their hand by clicking on the raise hand button that you'll find at the bottom of your screen. Attendees calling in can dial star nine on their phone, and we'll see a raised hand appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the clerk unmute you, you'll need to tell us your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you'd like to speak on another topic, please raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and maintaining meeting decorum. Could we please have a roll call? Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton? Thank you, everyone. And so as it's a special meeting, it takes us right into our business. And so our first order of business this evening is Resolution Number 47, Series 2021, a resolution approving the final planned unit development to allow construction of a 100,000-square-foot industrial building and associated site improvements, and a replat of the portion of the St. Louis Parish and Boulder Innovation Campus filing one to create one parcel and four lots located on the northeast corner of South 96th Street and Dillon Road. I'll open the public hearing and ask council members if they have any disclosures for the record. All right, seeing none, we will enter the comments and the materials from the packet into the record, and I'll turn it over to our planning staff, it looks like Director Ritchie, for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Can you see the screen? Okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. So yeah, tonight, as you introduced, we're here to consider Resolution 47 to approve a PUD and plat. All public notice was met per municipal code requirements. You are probably all very familiar with the site by now, as this is the third application that's come before you over the past year or so, but essentially tonight, we're talking about kind of the south-central portion of the site roughly outlined in red. And as far as a little bit of background goes, you probably remember the second GDP amendment was approved in 2020, which amended uses and development standards. And then in March of this year, you all approved St. Louis Parish and Boulder Innovation Campus filing one, which was a plat that created four lots, two parcels, and two outlots covering the entirety of the property, a PUD to allow 100,000-square-foot industrial building, and a PUD and SRU to allow the convenience store and fueling station. For a little bit of context, that approved site plan is here if we need to come back to it. And tonight, so here, we're looking at the overall GDP which regulates the entirety of the development, but tonight, we're talking about the area roughly in yellow, so between kind of the primary access point here and the secondary access point further south. And then collectively here, we're looking at an image of the plat and PUD, so you can see the four lots are outlined or shaded in blue, yellow, orange, and red. And then the subdivided parcel one A, which is just a further carving carving out of the the previous parcel one from the prior plat. You can see the industrial building is what is shown on the PUD. That is more toward the rear of the property, and it is accessed primarily through a signalized full-movement intersection here that was previously approved on the first PUD. And then this PUD and plat create the right-in, right-out access further to the south. And then lots two, three, and four are continuation of kind of the pad site development that was contemplated with filing one here or previously, excuse me. And as you recall, the architecture for lot one, the filing one PUD looked like this as well, and this PUD carries forth that same architectural scheme. It is a tilt-up building for the industrial user, but it does include the detailing, building material differentiation, and articulation in order to meet the CDDSG requirements. So with that, we just look into our compliance. First of all, we looked for compliance with the general development plan standards, and as they apply to this PUD, it covers building height, the CDDSG requirements rather than the IDDSG, which is industrial, so this needs to meet the commercial, as well as the kind of over and above standards for dark-skylighting, which this PUD does comply with, as well as compliance with the overall CDDSG requirement with the noted waivers. Two of these waivers are related to landscaping, and they're discussed here. The first is a requirement for 25% of the building perimeter landscaping. And this applicant has requested a waiver from this just due to concerns with water near the foundation. They placed additional landscaping at the site entry areas and at the rear of the site. Staff finds that this is an improved design and supports this request, as well as a continuation of the request for 20-foot-on-center-street trees for the north-south private drive. This one's due to the storm sewer design. And similar to the last PUD, this applicant placed trees along the rear of the property along the trail alignment. And so staff finds this will improve the trail experience. Therefore, we support this request. And as you can see, you know, just the landscape plan here, if it comes up with the additional trees located along the rear of the property adjacent to the proposed trail. Next up, we look at the plat. We'll keep it simple. We find it meets all the requirements in the Lewisville Municipal Code, as well as what was approved with subdivision agreement last time for filing one, the public land dedication deferral payment for the entirety of parcel one will be accommodated with this plat. The subdivision agreement reflecting this obligation is an attachment in your packet. And with that, we are recommending approval of Resolution 47, Series 2021, with one following condition. I talk about it a little bit more in the staff report, but basically, we just need to update a note on the plat, revising the word temporary and replacing with the word maintenance. So it's just kind of a technical correction here on the on the plat, but we want to capture that condition. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions from council members? Seeing none at this time, is there an applicant presentation, Director Ritchie?
I do believe they have a presentation for you this evening.
Thank you. I'll let you introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Megan Turner. Nice to see you all again. Thank you for the opportunity to present here. As Lisa said, you're probably very familiar with our our project now. And this is kind of the last last piece here that will likely be in front of you for a little while. So I will share my screen here and do just a really brief presentation. Can you all see that? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. And so as Lisa had talked about, and it is frozen for me, I apologize. There we go. As Lisa had talked about, we had originally come in with a GDP amendment that you guys approved, that council approved last November, and that outlined all the land uses, the setbacks, the height restrictions, kind of all of those items. And in March, you approved the the PUD for building one, which is shown on the left there, kind of right under the Boulder logo. And this is for filing number two, which is just directly to the south of that original, you know, building one. So filing number two, building two, we're calling it here. And this is 100,000-square-foot industrial building, very similar to the first building here. But it's 100,000-square-foot front park gorilla building will feature architecture that's really identical to what was approved in building one. Some of those additional items on the outside of the exterior of the building, including wood, wood, like kind of paneling, fiber cement board siding, and kind of varied parapet height as well to, you know, add some architectural elements and interests. But this will match the building exactly that's been approved to the north. One other kind of item here that that we were able to add in this to give you just orient you here on the site. This is the southeast corner of the site of the building, so the trail is actually this way. The future trail is is here, but we have an outdoor patio area, and you can kind of see the mature landscape and what that will look like in the future here. So it's it's a nice-looking building, and some of these interesting, interesting kind of elements that we've added here that are kind of above and above and beyond what's typically done in these industrial buildings. Again, just another view here, and one of the items that we worked around building one was was just the variation and materials on the exterior of the building. So 40% of the elevations actually consist of material other than textured concrete on a concrete tilt-up building. So we're really happy with with the way these buildings look and are excited to to start construction on them here. Another item that Lisa had mentioned and touched on is is our landscaping here. The building orientation kind of naturally screens this truck court from 96th and from the street, in addition to just the natural setback of the actual building location. You know, off of 96th, it's it's set back to the east pretty significantly. But we've also enhanced the landscaping along the trail, and then in addition to that, kind of in this area here highlighted, we're called out in in red so that there's some additional additional screening and and kind of hides that that truck court and truck dock area from the road. This is actual an actual rendering of what this will look like from 96th. So this is the future lighted intersection location, looking at building two, which is here, which is what we're talking about today. This is this is the building one that we discussed previously. And I'll just briefly touch on kind of some sustainability items that we're incorporating into this building. Tilt-wall construction is is really a sustainable kind of form of construction. There's some items that that are pretty typical in these industrial buildings that that are really sustainable. But a couple of things that I want to point out to you that that we're actually doing on this building that is not necessarily market is and that we're really excited about is adding additional kind of infrastructure and conduit for future electric vehicle charging stations for our tenants. So that will give us flexibility to, you know, accommodate tenant usage for electric vehicle charging stations, which in kind of the pre-marketing already that we're doing for these buildings, we're actually seeing a lot of. So we're excited to to be a part of that that movement here. And then another item is that we are going to have this building be solar-ready is what we're calling it. So the roof, the roof upgrades is up, the roof is upgraded from a structural capacity standpoint so that it can accommodate future solar. And solar is going to be very specific for each tenant that we that we are targeting here. And so we want to be able to provide flexibility while also, you know, providing that kind of sustainable element in our building and just make sure that we can accommodate our tenants' needs in the future as well. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. And so that that will take us to our public comment period for this agenda item. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment this evening? We have one person with their hand up so far, and others are welcome to raise them as well. Just remember, if you've dialed in by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And I'll call on you and ask you to say your name, and then tell us what you'd like to tell us. You'll have three minutes. Your name and address, please. First up this evening is Joshua Cooperman.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. I would just like to reiterate some written comments that I sent to the Planning Commission. I'm not sure that these comments are perfectly timed for this development, but I'd like to put them in anyway. In my comments to the Planning Commission, I made a suggestion, and the suggestion was that the developer should include direct access for pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles to the CTC. And this would obviously be across, under, or over the railroad. My reasoning is as follows. At the previous city council hearing about this development, one of the arguments in favor of development given by some Lewisville citizens was that the convenience store gas station would be very convenient for people who work at the CTC because there aren't really any similar facilities over there. If there were a direct link to the CTC, it would be even more convenient for those people to get to the convenience store and the gas station. The other reason to do this is really an argument from sustainability. Right? If there's not a direct connection to the CTC, whether you're a pedestrian, a bicyclist, or a motorist, you'll have to go all the way around in order to get over to the gas station or the convenience store. That will certainly discourage people from walking or bicycling and will encourage people to drive their cars. And I think we should always be looking to make our developments more walkable and bikeable as outlined in the Transportation Master Plan. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Joshua, Josh. And are there other members of the public that would care to comment this evening? All right, seeing none, that takes us back over to council questions and comments and discussions. So I just had a couple of questions for Planner Ritchie. Lisa, could you tell us a little bit, it says it conforms with the setback that we established in the GDP process, but could you just remind us about the setback and how it varies across the front of the property or doesn't vary? And and how this conforms to that?
Sure, certainly. So within the GDP, you probably remember there's a we kind of reconfirmed a 55-foot building setback, and then the when the Second Amendment was approved, it established a 30-foot parking setback. Really, that applies to properties fronting 96th Street, so it wouldn't apply to the lot one development. So that's deeper within the site. So really, the two setback requirements that were established through that GDP will apply on future PUDs for the lots two, three, and four.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. And so this normally, when we would do something like this, we would get all of the entire development at once. But because of the separate ownership, we've allowed this kind of strange process where we're allowing things to come in piece by piece. And so this property we're looking at plating tonight has a very irregular shape to it. And so has there been any discussion around if this irregular shape creates a future hardship that that's not our fault? I mean, we're not choosing this shape of this particular parcel, and so this could create future problems with space between the other lots and being able to fit everything in. So I just wonder if there was a discussion of that or if it's worth noting on the plat.
You know, I think that's a good comment. I think generally speaking, I'm not sure if you're discussing about just kind of the depths of lots two, three, and four, or this notch here in one A, or maybe a little bit of both.
Both, absolutely both.
Sure. So, you know, I mean, I think we agreed and pushed hard, as you remembered, with the first plat that really established this kind of north-south access drive. And I think staff did have concerns over future constraints and possibility for a request for waivers there. But, you know, at this point in time, being that that north-south drive is set, you know, we really are mimicking that same that same access configuration, which was shown in the PUD. As far as any kind of future development constraints here on parcel one A, I mean, and I mean, it does create certainly a little bit of a unique lot size here. But I don't view, I guess, this notch in this location as particularly constraining, you know, to future development, given that that portion is still owned by the archdiocese property or will be continued to be owned by the archdiocese property. And, you know, just being, I think, you know, as the current owner, they know what they're doing. So whether or not this needs to be captured on a plat, I don't know how or what exactly we would kind of fall back as far as kind of owner disclaimer. So I'm not sure. I would want to explore that concept with you or, you know, have Director Sakara come on. But you're you're right. I do think the record reflects, you know, certainly staff kind of noted concern over depth and that this is driven by the applicant design.
And so perhaps like a finding that just shows that like this lot layout is has been created. And so if this creates additional constraints on parcel one A, it will still have to comply with our zoning and land use regulations, something like that.
Yeah, I think I think, you know, you could do a finding, you know, that the the size and orientation of parcel one A isn't justification for a waiver, something to that effect. You know, just that that standard alone, you could craft a finding related to that. It wouldn't say, I don't know that you would want to go so far as, you know, no waivers would be supported, but you wouldn't support a future waiver. But that being said, you know, I don't think you also can bind a future council on any future decisions either. So, you know, you could put it in your findings for today, but I don't know that the how how much that could bind. I think that would just set your intent, but it could set probably a future council decision.
So alternatively, you could, we could just deny the whole thing and wait for the whole thing to come in together? Is that your alternate proposal, go-finding?
Oh, I mean, I don't know that I would go that far, and I honestly don't know that this lot configuration from my perspective renders parcel one A undevelopable. I mean, I really think, you know, that's kind of the intent of this logical lotline configuration. And from my perspective, the lot size, just due to the size and availability of kind of different site layouts, when you think about building, you know, where buildings could be sited and parking and the needs for detention. In my opinion, given just still the the large size of parcel one A, I don't know that this lot layout would be considered a logical or render this whole site undevelopable in the future.
Okay, so I mean, I think putting what you're saying is putting out a finding would clarify what our intention is and make it clear to staff and future council what was planned when we're coming through this.
Yeah.
Could you talk a little bit about the right-in, right-out? Is there a transportation study that shows that this won't create a stacking problem in the intersection?
Yeah, good question. So generally speaking, this transportation design was studied through their traffic study when the GDP, the second GDP amendment was submitted, and it does match kind of those findings. That traffic study was based on the assumption that lot one would be an industrial user. And so they didn't submit an updated traffic study for this PUD because essentially, you know, the time period was relatively the same, and the land uses contemplated in the traffic study matched this PUD. So no, our Public Works Department evaluated it. They did not find that there'd be concern, but their traffic engineer is on if you do have specific questions around that. But generally speaking, no, I don't believe staff has any concerns about stacking. There is, you can see, an excel, or excuse me, a deceleration lane kind of proposed for that right-in as it approaches, and 96th would be widened as well.
And so where that's shown on this figure here, Lisa, is that in public right-of-way or is that on the property?
So you can see kind of the delineation of the the portions that are shaded and different colors as private in anything not, you know, the gray here is the street, but basically, anything below those shaded areas are all within right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. And just on the detention facility that looks like is proposed here, will that where there'll be an opportunity for regional detention in that facility? So other, you know, future developments can feed into that as well, or will we see more detention?
No, I think that's a good question. So really, this detention pond, similar to the last PUD, this detention pond is designed to accommodate drainage from the four lots proposed. So this will serve for drainage for lots one, two, three, and four. I don't believe it was designed to accommodate drainage for any of parcel one A, but their engineer could confirm that, but that's my understanding of the drainage design here. So parcel one A, I believe, would still need to accommodate its own drainage in the future.
Thank you so much. Next, with questions, comments, or other, is Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you. I think this question is for Megan Turner. Can you just help me understand the truck pattern based on the design? Is it all in at the traffic light? And then if you could maybe just kind of give me a cursor view of what you anticipate the semi-truck traffic looking like?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I think what we're anticipating is that the trucks will use that full-lighted intersection for the most part. You know, in other developments, we've we've kind of seen that be the pattern. They like the lighted intersection, especially at the turn left. You know, back on the 96th, they'll want to use that lighted intersection. So you can see the truck court, you know, location, and then the access point onto that private shared drive that takes you to the west to the lighted intersection. That's what we're anticipating. And then kind of keeping the employee traffic separate for the most part. They can still use that light, of course, but having those access points really be separate is what we aim for and what what the tenants like as well.
Okay, so the trucks are able, it's hard for me to get the scale, but the trucks are able to pull in on the north side of lot one and make their turn to back into the space. It's all that they're not, they're not meant to drive around the building or anything like that to access the to to pull into the building. That's all.
Yeah.
All happens in one spot.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
Okay. And I guess for Planner Ritchie, we're mostly just, you know, obviously focused on the on on lot one and lot right now. Lots two, three, and four are we don't have information, right? We're we're just looking at lot one today.
Yeah, that's correct. As far as the PUD goes, the PUD really creates kind of the private drive. So it talks about kind of the access points through there, but really, the development, the only development right now is on lot one. So lot two, three, and four will need future PUDs to pre before we're able to approve any construction on those lots.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification.
But Director Ritchie, lot two and four are being replatted tonight, correct?
Correct, yeah. So the plat creates lots two, three, and four, but no development can be constructed on those. That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank Lisa for the staff report and your presentation. Once again, very well done. Really appreciate it. You anticipate a lot of questions. The the discussion that occurred at the Planning Commission, one of the things that was talked about along the lines of what Counselor Dickinson was asking about was traffic. And and the answer was that, and I know this is blending a little bit here, was also talking about Redtail Ridge and the traffic here. It wasn't clear to me exactly what the outcome or how that blended traffic study was done. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure, I can talk at a high level, and I think if you want to get more into the technical, I'll have their transportation engineer, who again is on, but answer that. But essentially, two different traffic consultants prepared their traffic studies, but they relied on each other and the city guided, I think, some of the assumptions to make sure that the background assumptions were the same. And the city and they factored in each other's land uses kind of at different build-outs, right? So whatever timeframes they were evaluating, we plugged in assumptions around how much development would be in place within those assumptions. So again, done by different traffic engineers, but they did incorporate, you know, sometimes they don't do that. If the site is vacant, you know, a traffic engineer might not know what to put in for an assumption on a property, but each one basically cross-referenced each other for the assumptions for development so that the final roadway sections and volumes, given each kind of year of build-out, included development from the other site.
And so, well, okay, I just, and my next question, I guess my follow-up, you're satisfied that that was done at a professional and adequate level for our analysis?
Yes, planning staff as well as Public Works, you know, did do that. We met a couple of times as staff with the transportation engineers. And again, while they're different companies, we feel confident that their methodologies and their assumptions, we reviewed and, you know, provided comments back and forth. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm I'm satisfied with that. I know we have Director Koar on too, you know, if I don't know if he wants to speak to that further, but both planning and Public Works staff looked at it.
Yeah, I think that's a that's a good enough answer for me. If I go any deeper, I'll get lost, so we don't we don't want to go there. You know, the other thing I'd like to say is I I always appreciate when I look at these things, the discussions that occurs at the Planning Commission, the analysis, the questions. I mean, they even started asking questions about sustainability, about these buildings and so forth, even getting farther ahead of our agenda, and I appreciate the the comments both with you, Lisa, and Director Sakara made along those lines. So I really appreciate all those efforts. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion if we're ready to make a motion.
You can absolutely make a motion to get frame discussion. It won't end discussion.
Exactly. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 47, Series 2021, 2021. Thank you, Mayor.
I was second, but could I?
There's a second. So I'll take the second, and then you can make a friendly amendment, Councilmember Lipton.
Thank you.
So there's now a motion on the table. Go ahead, Councilmember Lipton.
Yeah, I think we should add the one staff condition that was contained in the recommendation is to make sure it's in the motion.
Thank you. And will the mover please indicate whether you accept the friendly amendment?
I accept the friendly amendment. I should have caught it myself. Thank you.
Thank you. And the second, or will you accept your friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, great. Councilmember Lipton, did you have other comments you wanted to make?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I would like also like to offer a friendly amendment to include a finding that the size and orientation of lot one. I'm sorry, I lost the lot number.
Parcel one A?
Is it one A?
Parcel one A.
Of parcel one A is not a justification for a waiver? Would the mover accept the finding friendly amendment?
You know, I I listened intently during the discussion with the planners. I'm not really sure. I'm not really sure what the purpose of this is. I understand that this is an odd shaped lot. Um, and any planning commission council discussion about what they propose shouldn't feel constrained by other waivers that have been given. That's my opinion. Are you saying you're trying to say there shouldn't be any waivers because of the configuration of lot?
So, um, thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. So my, the reason, the question I'm raising is, so the applicant is choosing the configuration of the lots today. They're deciding what configuration to make them. And this configuration could put additional constraints on parcel one A. And um, so if we have the whole picture, they might decide to do it differently and not require a waiver at all. Um, like, so, you know, we might hear that there's not enough space for a truck loading dock in this area, or there's not enough space between the railroad and this or that or streets. I'm just, I have no idea what will be proposed for parcel one A because it's not in front of us, right? And so choosing this lot orientation is odd. It's not a rectangle. It's not a straight lot line to the back of the lot. It creates very narrow lots in the front. Um, and it's the choice of the applicant to, to do that. And so I just want to clarify that their choice to do that should not create a waiver in future applications.
I, I, I guess where I'm, I'm struggling with the proposals, um, I mean, this is an odd shape regardless of however they chop it up. And they have, they have chosen to configure in even an odder way than I might have done. But there might be good reasons for some waivers in the future. Are you proposing something that says there's no waivers? I, I'm just trying to,
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just not quite clearly understanding.
Yeah, no, I completely understand. So there may be things that would require a waiver and, and those things could come forward. But one thing that we hear often is like, orientation and lot size is a reason to request a waiver or a hardship created by lot size and orientation is a reason to request a waiver. And, and so I'm um, putting on the table that that decision is being made by the applicant themselves to create this lot size and orientation. And so it's not a hardship. It's, I, I mean, if we had the whole picture and we had the whole general development plan like we should have done on this property, then we would be able to understand the entire layout and the flow of traffic and whether or not to accept or reject waivers. But by doing it in this piecemeal way, we could be setting ourselves up for an unforeseen circumstance on our end because we don't know what will be proposed. Maybe on the other end, they do know what will be proposed. But creating the orientation like this, just that one piece shouldn't be a justification for a waiver. Now, there could be other things like proximity of the railroad or, you know, other hardships that might exist on the lot. It's just that the orientation that they're choosing today shouldn't create a waiver justification in the future. That's my opinion.
So ma- may I ask for uh, uh, two lifelines on this? I, I would like to ask, uh, you know, Planner Ritchie and Director Sakaro for their thoughts on this, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Sure. So, um, yeah, a couple of thoughts. I think again, you know, I don't know that this, again, I don't know that any decision you can do through a finding is going to bind future councils. I think it's a way of capturing your intent um, on that. Um, I think even, I don't know that it has to be embedded with a finding either, but um, it's certainly one way to do it and add it to the resolution of approval um, that approved at the plat. So I think really it's at the discretion of city council if they find that, you know, kind of the logical lot configuration is met. Um, again, staff doesn't have concerns. I agree, it's not a rectangle, but you know, within our commercial development, sometimes we do have properties that aren't necessarily square. And are still able to accommodate future development. So I think this is kind of a discretionary decision. I'm not sure if Directors Akari, you want to chime in further?
Uh, I don't know that I have a lot to add. I think, and again, we're just talking about parcel one A. We're not talking about lot two anymore, or any of those narrow frontage lots. Is that correct?
That's fine for now.
Okay, so I, so I, I would say that, I mean, staff has an analysis and opinion and I think, um, you know, there could be council concern. And I think the, you know, if council is concerned with the lot configuration on parcel one A, um, you know, another option is to either reject the plat because you don't think it's a logical configuration of parcel one A for future development. Or you could ask for further information about how parcel one A could be platted in the future to maybe get some scenarios of how it might be platted to accommodate future development. And so the applicant could come back before you make a decision and demonstrate that, um, you know, it could be developed logically under some scenario. So that's an alternative. I, I, I do think that, um, you know, limiting kind of a criteria for PUD review, um, you know, could be problematic. I don't know if City Attorney Kelly wants to weigh in on that, or if she's here this evening. Um, I don't know that you could bind, like Lisa was saying, um, future decisions to that effect, but you might be able to. But if you do want to actually bind, I would maybe suggest putting a note on the plat itself rather than just within the resolution. So I think those things need to be explored with City Attorney on, depending on what you intend to do with that condition.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney.
Um, I, I, I think what I'm hearing is, um, it's a not really a, a message of intent. And it's meant to inform a next council who will be looking at a proposal for this parcel. Um, if that is the extent of what we're talking about, I can accept a friendly amendment.
That is my intention. And so maybe we could get help in wording it in a way that frames it that way. Um, does the second tier accept?
Do you have the final wording?
What I had originally proposed was that the size and orientation of parcel one A is not a justification for a waiver. But I'm open to.
Well, could we say by virtue of the size and shape parcel one A? I, I guess I'm struggling with the wording. And I, I understand what you're saying. I guess, you know, I really truly believe that all that land can be used productively. And it's not going to create a hardship on, on any developer that comes in. They'll put park in there, they'll do something, maybe solar panels and those. So I, I don't think it's going to be an issue later and I don't think somebody would ask for a waiver, but if you want the record to indicate. And I wonder if the minutes of the, of this meeting might be enough. I, I don't know. But sure, like, I wish Kathleen's here to help us out.
Can I ask for clarification, Mayor? Are we talking just setback waivers or any waiver? Because really setbacks would be related to the, perhaps the size and uh, shape.
I can't, I can't necessarily completely answer your question because I can't foresee every possible scenario that could possibly come forward. But I mean, you could contemplate a height waiver that was to say, you know, we need increased density through height because the lot layout is faulty or so. I don't know. I don't know what could possibly happen. I think the comment is simply that because we have no way, because we have strayed from our typical general development plan that we would have done on this type of proposal and allowed the applicant to come in and face it as we don't know what's going to happen on parcel one A because we can't look at this comprehensively. And so that unknown, um, I'm just trying to document for the record that, that the choices that are being made tonight on the plat at the request of the applicant shouldn't justify a waiver on parcel one A because of the size and shape. I don't, I don't know what thing they might contact. I have no way of knowing what types of things.
Sure, yeah. So I, so I think, I think there's two scenarios here. One is that the size and shape of the law creates a, a substandard development or undesirable development. But i- in addition, our, having waivers within PUDs, the, the sole purpose is to say that this is a better option. So that's, that's our standard. It, it's, that's part of our standard. There's more to it, but part of it is that whatever design they're coming forward with is better than our underlying zoning would require our, our design guidelines. So you can get waivers from all of these design standards as well. So I guess my only concern is that, you know, a future development can come in with something that, you know, we think most people will think is a better design, but then they be, um, you know, prohibited by this policy from seeking waivers from what would be a better design.
But I mean, so I, I appreciate the debate, but I mean, that might, that need for a waiver might be able to be avoided if we came in with a comprehensive general development plan and plat and laid out the entire property on the onset. I mean, then you might be able to avoid the need for the waiver altogether. And so it's cre- it's this process that we've created has some flaws associated with it, um, inherently. And so we're trying to be flexible and accommodate the request of the applicant and it's, it's, um, you know, so in doing that, it creates some other issues. Um, Mayor Proton Lipton, I just am waiting to find out on wording from you and if you accept or reject.
I appreciate the promotion, but I'm just Councilmember Lipton tonight.
Oh, sorry.
What, what is the motion on the floor, the, or the wording that's on the floor?
Um, I can repeat what I had originally proposed and, and I had proposed that we would add a finding that the size and orientation of parcel one A is not a justification for a waiver.
Can we say is not the sole justification for a waiver?
Yes.
Okay, if you make that, that the motioner would make, accept that change, I'll, I'll be able to support it.
Well, I can accept that.
All right, thank you. And, um, so now we have a motion on the table. Um, and I'll just reframe the motion so everyone knows what we're talking about really quick here. And I've just got to go back up to it, but it was a motion to approve resolution forty-seven, series twenty twenty-one with the additional condition as proposed by staff in the packet and with an additional finding that the size and orientation of parcel one A is not a sole justification for a waiver. And with that, we'll continue on council deliberation with the motion on the floor. And next in the queue is Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, good discussion. Um, I'm, I, I have process concerns about what we're doing. At, at some level, and I, I guess, I, I just stated, at, at some level, we can just deny, you know, we could push forward and just not grant the waiver, right? That is a possibility. And instead, we're, I think as council, yeah, we're being presented with something. But we don't have to accept it. We can reject it. And what I worry about is what, on the condition, and I'm, I'm not saying I, I wouldn't support it here, but I, the, what Director Sakara was saying is, or at least what I heard from between uh, Planner Ritchie and Director Sakara is, one, it's not clear that the language has particular significance, for lack of a better term, shows our intent, but like so does the, the meeting minutes will show us that. But I think, uh, he, Director Sakara talked about, I think, he didn't use this term, but sort of meddling with our, with our standards for waivers. And I mean, are we gonna, I, I just wonder whether by not making the hard decision, denying the waiver, we're only adding to the problem. And then we're covering ourselves with, uh, I don't know whether it's a finding or not. I mean, it's not a factual finding. It's a, it's, it's a essentially a statement of our intent, but I, I'm just, I'm really uncomfortable with that. I, I do understand that the process could have been different, but whose fault is that? I mean, I, I don't think that's, I don't think it's the applicant's fault. I, I just, I have a real, I, and I can't foresee, and I, I know, Mayor, that you've said, you know, you can't foresee all of the uh, mischief that might, this might, you know, that might happen as a result of that. And I, I equally, um, and it's not just, you know, your, your language or whatever. It's just the concept of doing it this way potentially creates mischief of its own that I can't really foresee. And I guess I, it, it, it makes the process seem a little more unpredictable. And I do worry about that. I, I don't know that this, I'm not going to uh, throw myself in front of the bus on one, um, on one proposal, but I, I, I do have concerns about that. I would feel more comfortable with the language that, that was proposed. Let me, let me suggest something which is a little more comfortable for me just from a legal standpoint. And it, it's the, something to the effect that, and, and maybe throwing this out as a friendly amendment to that language that, um, I think you and Councilmember Lipton, formerly Mayor Proten Lipton, um, soon to be not any kind of gentleman Lipton. Put on the table. And it would be something to the effect of, the self, I don't know, if the size and configuration of the property will not, without more uh, be justification for a waiver in the future. I think that, that just leaves open the possibility, that may be other facts, but it's, it's a little bit different than soul. Um, because frankly, it'll, it, it, it's easy to, it's easy to get around soul by, by just characterizing it perhaps a little differently, but without more suggests a quantum of evidence that's going to be needed to, to, to change it. But anyway, those are, those are my two contributions, but I, I'd throw that out as a friendly amendment.
Mayor Proton Maloney, do you accept the friendly amendment?
What is your opinion, Mayor?
I, it's absolutely great.
So it still meets your intent?
Yeah, absolutely.
I accept.
In the second tier, Councilmember Lipton?
I'm not sure what it is. Could you repeat it?
The size and configuration of the property without more will not be the justification of a waiver in the future. So instead of saying the word soul, it changes it, the language to be without more.
Or what?
Without more, like without more of something.
Justification. It's a, I mean, that's a common legal phrasing, but it's without more of a justification than that.
Okay, so you're going to include all that wording?
So would you, um, Councilmember Lay, would you like me to, so the, what I have written down that you said was the size and configuration of the property without more will not be the justification of a waiver in the future?
Yeah. I don't think it's a lot more language. It's just. But anyway.
Chris, what you phrased it the second time, it was more what?
Without more.
Or what?
Justification, he said the second time.
Or, or evidence?
Okay, so can you choose a word?
So, um, so let me, I'll start calling on people again. I apologize for things getting out of there a little bit. So I'm going to try to capture it the way I think Councilmember Lipton is asking for and ask Councilmember Lay if it's, um, if it meets his uh, purpose of his friendly amendment. So the size and configuration of the property without more evidence will not be the justification of a waiver in the future. Is that all right, Councilmember Lay? I'm trying to, I'm trying.
I, I tell you what, let's, let's leave it. I, I don't, I don't want to prolong this anymore. Um, I'll withdraw that and we'll go with the language that we did before. I think I'm fine with that. Just do, do it. Let's vote on it.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Lay. And so the next commenter is Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with the general conversation. What, what I'm hearing is, uh, hey, you're creating your own problem. Please don't come back and tell us there's a problem that you created and then ask us to solve your problem for you or for a waiver that's going to solve a problem you created. So I think that's, that, that sounds like the intent and, and, you know, I think it, it doesn't assume any uh, ill intent. It's just saying, you're doing something kind of weird. Don't come back and tell us, hey, it's kind of weird. Um, that's on you. So, so that's what I've been hearing and I think getting the language right is important. Um, but I think what's really important for all of us, or if this comes back in twenty twenty-two, th- those of us that are on council, have a long enough memory and can look back to this moment and say, whoa, don't, don't complain about the lot configuration. You made it, um, when, when you came in here for, for phase two. So I agree with that intent entirely. Um, and I, I think we've And I, I think we've, we're certainly as, as Plan Ritchie put it, I think, you know, we get to decide on phase three, we don't have to give any waiver when it comes for something like that. And if it comes for a different reason, that makes total sense and it has nothing to do with what we did here today, then we can give that waiver and that's fine if it seems reasonable, but we're not going to come back here a year from now and be like, oh gee, the shape is weird. I get it. You have to do something weird now. That's what they're on making is, is what I've heard and is what I can support. So I'll, I'll be voting for this with the current amendments.
Thank you. Any other discussion of the motion? I just wanted to comment on Mr. Cooperman's comments. I think having a direct access into the CTC from this property would be a huge benefit. Pedestrian access or vehicular access or bike access. But our code, my understanding of our code requires, you know, access to a city street be created and the, the applicant can determine what street that is. And even if we did have some kind of language in our code that could require us to build that connection, I think the railroad could actually prohibit us from being able to do it if you look at the connection. In Bruefield, that they just built across the railroad, it took them many, many, many years to get that connection done. But I think without a doubt, your suggestion would improve the development. I just don't know that we have any tools to require that through our code. And so, but I do really appreciate the sentiment and I think it's absolutely spot on that it, and I think the developers would likely agree that if they could do that and get right across that they would, it would improve the success of their development as well. So I, I really do thank you for those comments. Any other comments from council members or questions? All right, seeing now, I'll close the public hearing. And I will ask our city clerk, Ms. to take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Pro temp Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next item tonight, which is discussion direction on our dark skies compliant lighting policy. We'll have a staff presentation, maybe from planning directors of care, but we will find out.
Okay, it's from Lisa.
Yeah, you all get me again here. So I'm going to pull up my screen here. Yeah, so moving into a little more informal discussion here to some discussion and direction about a city council work plan item from twenty twenty one regarding establishment for policies and potential regulations around dark sky lighting. And so really kind of what would be the purpose for establishing these types of regulations? It'd be to minimize adverse offsite impacts of lighting such as light trespassing glare, protecting natural environment and wildlife. There's resources in your packet, more specifically that go into some of these benefits. I'm not going to cover all of these tonight, but the packet had more information on this. As well as potential conservation of energy and resources, a lot of these new lighting technologies, as well as kind of making sure that your light levels are lower, are, are good for the environment as well as for conservation, as well as to reduce light pollution and re-improve nighttime environment for astronomy. So generally, when communities look at dark sky lighting, they typically look at the following types of topics. So quantity of lighting, spacing, location, placement of lighting, design of the light themselves, such as lights and color types, light spread, direction and shielding of lighting, dimmers, timers, et cetera. So just a, a little graphic here, just so folks just can understand kind of the gradient of what we're talking about. So on the far left, you'll see a light and you can see the light source is exposed, right? So it hangs down below the fixture itself. And so really that light then can spread out in the horizontal direction. And really, at that point, your lighting area is that you don't need to be lighting. And so really, when you think about how you want to use lighting, you want to target it for where it's needed and for what its purpose is. And so a, a light type, kind of on this furthest left, is violating many of these principles. Kind of the next phase of getting better is kind of what we call this full cutoff, where it really brings that entire light source up within the shield here. And so really then it focuses and directs lighting to where it's needed. And then in further improving from that, we get into color temperature. And so some of the resources we'll talk about, you know, some of the, as an example, I think some of the early LED lights that folks were putting in place had a really cool white or even blue shade of lighting. And a lot of studies have shown that that's harmful for, you know, sleep rhythms as well as for wildlife. And so really best practices now are really capturing this warmer light, what we call color temperature. And that's measured through, it's measured through, it's the, the, kind of the quantification around that is a Kelvin. And so really three thousand Kelvin and lower are what best practices would say. And, and just so you know, staff does pay attention to that color temperature at a lot of our PUDs and a lot of our applicants over the last few years are coming in at this three thousand Kelvin and below. So the warmer light temperatures, so you'll see that kind of in the evolution of some of the construction of our buildings, some of our older PUDs that have the LED lights or the wider color. And we've, you know, since learned to really capture and require the lighter. Kind of the next way of getting better then is to reduce the light intensity itself. And so that's really kind of the lumen output, the foot candle output. And again, really lighting only to an intensity that meets the need and purpose for what the lighting is. And so bright isn't always necessarily better. You really want to make sure that you're capturing a light intensity that's appropriate. And, and then further than kind of the final way to improve, at least for this graphic, is timers, right? So then even when, when the use is no longer needed and the, the area no longer needs lit to either reduce further through a timer or to turn it off through a timer. Then one of the things we're going to talk about tonight is residential. And so just this graphic is just intended to kind of show and illustrate your more typical light fixture on a residential house is kind of this open bulb style, right? So the bulb is exposed and, and the light is visible kind of in all directions. Whereas dark sky would again require that the, the light source itself be captured up within the fixture as you see here. And so really that light source is directional and captured. And then I guess, you know, here are the image on the right really shows kind of the effect of that. So we have a lot of homes, you know, in Louisville that were built prior to understanding, you know, kind of dark sky best practices. And so really the image on the left, right, you've got that unshielded light where the image on the right, or excuse me, the light on the right is dark sky compliant. And it's really just kind of lighting the area on the property that's needed. So we have been as staff working on this for a little while over the last few years. In twenty eighteen, we began publishing kind of information for our residents, including some newsletter articles. The city in Lowe's organized a discount program in twenty nineteen for dark sky compliant lighting. When we look at the policies we have in place, the comprehensive plan recommends examination of policies and procedures explicitly to lessen light pollution and impacts to our community. So we already have policy support for this. Commercial property, the lighting standards are regulated through the CDDSG, the IDDSG and the downtown design manual. But currently we have no regulations in place for residential development or for public infrastructure. And again, we talked about this a little bit. I won't, I won't go through all of this. These are just kind of the, the standards that communities include. I went through that more specifically on the graphic. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any other questions. I didn't want to go too neat, you know, too deep into all of the kind of technical issues. But we are seeking your direction in two areas. One is around residential and the other is around commercial. So with that, let's pause here for the residential. The primary question is, is should the city adopt regulations for dark sky supportive lighting standards in residential zone districts? And if so, you know, a couple, a couple, a couple follow up questions, then should the regulations apply to all residential property types, including single family and multifamily? And then when should compliance with these regulations apply? So just for new construction, if we set a threshold for a substantial remodel, or do we want to enact kind of an amortization period to get all properties into compliance? For example, the city of Boulder, when they updated their lighting standards, I believe it was in two thousand and three, they put in a fifteen year amortization for properties. So the, really, they gave them a really lengthy time and that, that expired in twenty eighteen. And so really the expectation in the city of Boulder now is that everyone be in compliance with this regulation. And then in place of regulatory requirements for residential properties, should the city prioritize education and incentive to improve this? So really you have kind of a spectrum and a range of options in front of you. And we are seeking some direction from you on what you'd like us to bring back.
And Director Ritchie, if you'll just show the commercial discussion, I want to take public comment and allow folks to weigh in before we deliberate as a council. And just so, just so the public knows the types of things, this will be up for discussion as well.
Awesome. That's a great, that's a great plan. So yeah, so moving into the commercial, we, as you know, are updating the CDDSG, IDDSG and the mixed use standards actually refer back to the commercial design standards. So those are, those we plan to update through those design guidelines. So those are in the works and we don't really need direction from you on that. We plan to include all of these best practices within those. But as you know, the darks, the downtown design manual is not up for revision. And so we would just seek direction if whatever we do for commercial property, we should figure out a way to bring our downtown design manual up to speed with those same standards sooner rather than later. And then for non-residential development, other than new construction, when should compliance with regulations apply? We assume they will apply with all new construction. So really with the existing commercial properties which we have, which obviously are numerous. Do we want an amortization period or a substantial remodel? And then just finally, what other research and information would be helpful for you to consider the impacts of a dark sky policy?
Thank you so much. And so that takes us to our public comment portion on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand and tell us who you are and your address, and then tell us what you would like to tell us. Our first commenter is Josh Cooperman.
Hello. Hi, this is Josh Cooperman again, at two sixteen Griffith Street. As a longtime International Dark Sky Association member, I really, really strongly support the city adopting a dark sky ordinance in line with the recommendations from the International Dark Sky Association. And I would preferably like to see it applied to all types of developments, residential, commercial, industrial and downtown. When my family and I moved here, a little more than a year and a half ago, I was planning to advocate for such a thing and I was heartened to see that it was going to be considered already by the council. So I didn't have to, didn't have to advocate it for it too much, although I'll do some more advocating right now. I like to think that, you know, dark sky ordinances are sort of just totally win-win kinds of ordinances. I don't really see any drawbacks to them, right? They're all about being intelligent about how you do lighting. And, you know, basically designing your lighting well and realizing that there's really essentially no need whatsoever to send up any light up into the sky. As Lisa Ritchie pointed out, there are a lot of benefits to dark sky ordinances. At first she didn't emphasize it as much, but she did eventually. Right, they're, they're great for people too, right? Because some of these bright lights and things like that are not healthy for us. And they're great for wildlife and they're great for conserving energy. I wanted to make just a couple more specific comments from what was in the, the packet. I would definitely be in favor of an ordinance that would phase out non-compliant lighting over several years. I know it might be hard to do, but there are fewer cases of pretty egregious lighting in town. And if those could be phased out more quickly, that would be great. I think there was also a brief mention about places where people have lights that are specifically pointed upwards, like at flagpoles or at certain residences have trees that are illuminated or there are buildings that are illuminated from below. I would like to point out that in virtually all of those situations, the same effect can be had by pointing the light down from above. Yeah, so I'd just like to end by saying that I, again, I really support a dark sky ordinance in line with the recommendations of the International Dark Sky Association. And I look forward to all of the citizens of Louisville being able to see the dark, the, the stars and Milky Way maybe much, much better than we can at the moment. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Are there other members of the public that would care to comment this evening? The next commenter is the phone number ending in eight two two six. And you may need to unmute yourself on your end. There you go.
Good evening. This is Sheri Summer, nine ten South Palisade Court. Thank you very much for making this a priority on your agenda. First, I'd like to address the commercial and city owned property regulations. It sounds like Boulder began this process almost twenty years ago in two thousand and three. It's the ordinance expired in twenty eighteen, if I'm not incorrect. I would really love to see a much shorter amortization timeline, maybe two to four years. I, I, it would be great to know what might prevent that from happening because I feel like we just don't have that much time. I, there's a lot of bird deaths and I've noticed a lot fewer pollinators in my garden and I think time is of the essence. I wonder what the cost would be to businesses and how that would affect them. And one other thing I was reading about is in Paris, the lighting on the buildings themselves, building signs and things, all are required to be dimmed after, I think midnight, midnight until dawn. And so we've been talking about lighting in parking lots and, you know, lights that are meant to illuminate things. But perhaps we could also address lights on buildings that create light that's not really serving any purpose. I think it would be great if street lights could be on motion detectors and I wonder if there's any problem with that. So those are the commercial points. Getting to the residential, holiday lights, they said, are, are fine within a thirty day time span. And of course, like around in December, there aren't a lot of migrating birds and insects, perhaps not as many. But often people have very festive lights on their pergolas and things like that, which I think are beautiful. But I just kind of wonder how that might be treated. That could be some sort of subject that it could be worth looking at. I do think the idea of having incentives and markings on products at Home Depot and Lowe's is a very good one. And then the final one is lights along open space. I often walk at night along open spaces. And there are many lights that are activated on people's properties that flood the open space with light. It's incredible. I mean, hundreds of feet. So it would be good to think about how to educate people or to, to do something about that issue. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next commenter is Cindy. You might need to unmute on your end.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I sound like a phone commercial. Okay. I wanted to tell you, I was really excited to see this on the discussion for tonight and I hope that it will be a priority on the work plan. Dark night skylighting is extremely important for our community, not just for residents like me who like to walk and bike ride at night, enjoy stargazing, but also for the wildlife, the safety and attractiveness of the community. I'd like to see both a residential and a commercial dark night skylighting ordinance, not just a voluntary suggestion. But we could enforce the ordinance very kindly with a lot of education. As our community grows and adds more commercial development, our sky glow is increasing. It would be very helpful to dim the streetlights in big parking lots, especially like the rec center. And there's a huge parking lot, like eight thirty three South Boulder Road where GYAM and the other businesses are located. It's very bright at night. I used to see fox and coyote and all kinds of wildlife there, but it's so bright now. Also, I've noticed an increase of residential bright floodlights pointed directly at public walkways, sidewalks and along open space paths in the last few years. And this light trespass actually decreases safety because of glare and shadows, detracts from our community design and causes a hazard for evening bike riders and walkers due to the impact of being temporarily blinded and having evening vision reduced by these extremely bright lights. I've actually almost crashed on my bike a couple of times because of these lights suddenly coming on and blinding me. So I think especially the lights that trespass on the public walkways and open space, we need to do some education for these homeowners. And I think it would help to have a light fixture discount agreement with Lowe's or Home Depot for residents and business owners who want to update their lighting to dark night skylighting. When I posted this information on Nextdoor, some folks were concerned about the cost of upgrading their lighting. So it'd be great to have some kind of incentive and assistance. And I guess that's all I want to say tonight. Thanks so much for your consideration of a dark night skylighting ordinance. And I guess that's all I want to say tonight. Thanks so much for your consideration of a dark night skylighting ordinance.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public care to comment on this agenda item? Right. Thank you. Seeing none, that takes us back over to council discussion and to give direction to staff. So if we could have our council member Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I believe that the city should adopt a regulation for dark sky in some kind of code. It's important for many reasons that were just voiced by Lisa and by the public who called in. And so I, I do think that we should at least discuss the process and, and how it would be implemented.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, I'm very supportive of, of adopting a dark sky ordinance on the residential side as well as the commercial side. I know we've, we've taken some steps in recent plaits, or sorry, in recent GDPs to make it dark sky compliant. We heard some about that tonight. And I, I think when we talk about this issue, I think about kind of growing up in Lewisville and, you know, sitting on my, in my yard when I was a kid and stargazing and with my friends or whatever at night in summertime. And I can't, I can't do that anymore. You know, it's, it's, we've, we've, the town has grown and, and the light pollution has gotten too much. So, yeah, I'm very supportive of the idea of, of doing something like this for, for all kinds of reasons, so.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Just for clarification, we're just answering the first question, right?
Yeah, I was considering, so I don't want to, I don't want to push people too, too hard, but you know, if people generally agree, we can move on. Because I understand the devil will be in the details and people may have differences of opinion on approach and things like that. So if there's general consensus that we do want to move forward with some type of regulation in residential zone districts, we could move to the next part. But if, if people want to continue to discuss the first part, fine too.
I mean, I'm, I would propose seeing if we have enough thumbs up to say we want to do something.
So that sounds like a great plan. So generally speaking, in agreement with Councilmember Fahey and Brown, that we would want to move forward with some kind of ordinance on dark skies. All right. So let's let other folks have a chance, because it's important that everybody's heard and that might persuade some of us to change our opinions. Councilmember Dickinson?
Excuse me. Still getting over my first cold. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm less supportive of the residential. I'm just thinking of the unintended consequences. I'm, I'm picturing my own front light and like, oh, is that no longer? It, it doesn't, it, I don't feel like the light pollution is coming from my light on my front porch that's covered. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out if we're creating more of a issue than we're solving on these small residential lights. I think the major issue is on commercial, which I know is not what we're talking about right now, but I just want to make sure that it's, it's understood that I'm not anti-dark skies. I think that's, I'm super pro-dark sky. I don't know how supportive I am of an ordinance on residential units. I'm thinking of people's string lights. Those seem like, that would be absolutely not allowed. And I, I see hundreds of those as I walk through town. And so I don't know if it's our intention to get rid of all the string lights in Lewisville that people have added over the last decade. So I'm just, I'm wary of, of unintended consequences that aren't probably changing my stargazing, that someone next door has some string lights over their gazebo. And I want to make sure that we're not, yeah, pissing more people off and we're helping because I think the intention is great. And I'm, I'm excited about dark skies and not convinced that this is, the residential part is the way to get it.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Maloney?
I, I think Councilor Lipton was ahead of me, actually.
Councilmember Lipton?
Well, I do have a question, and that is, talking about residential zone districts, are we talking about also the municipal lighting? The street lighting, or are we just talking about lighting people's homes?
I think we should put street lighting in a parking lot and definitely talk about it this evening, but not associate it with what we're talking about just right now.
Okay, that's fine. I can return back to that. I, I mean, I'm supportive of some reasonable regulation on the residential. I'm, I'm concerned as Councilmember Dickinson that we might go beyond what is reasonable and we got to make sure that we don't. But I, I think there are obvious cases of people with floodlights and doing things that are, are just, you know, beyond what's necessary to protect themselves and protect their homes. I think we should focus on those and and, and not get too, too far overboard in the residential area. I don't think we should go overboard in any of the areas. But, you know, just show some moderation and some realistic thinking about what needs to be done to solve whatever the problem really is. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. So it sounds like there's general consensus to have some types of regulations, but we want to talk more about the details to understand what applies, what doesn't, how we would implement it, when we would implement it. So I think there is consensus that yes, we would want to have a, a regulation in residential zone districts. And then, of course, the details matter to all of us. And so I see that there's an order on the list. The next thing I would encourage us to talk about is additional prioritization around education and incentives to be paired with our new ordinance. I think that if we talk about that next, it'll facilitate the flow of the discussion. So I would propose that we suggest to staff that we absolutely want to promote education and awareness of the issue and to add funding for incentives for people to be able to retrofit fixtures to come into compliance. I'm just putting that on the table as, I'm, I'm guessing, knowing your personalities, that that'll be something that's popular with the whole group. Is that generally something that we can all support? All right. So that was enthusiastically supported. I hope staff saw the thumbs up. But having a strong educational program to pair with anything that we do is important. And then having additional funding come forward for council in the budget process so that we can incentivize the shift is important as well, so that we decrease the burden on the community. So that'll take us into sort of the details that people started talking about on, and we don't have to solve everything tonight. We're just giving staff some direction so that while they go out and work on this, they can come back to us with an ordinance that has choices and more details and they can, and get the kind of community input we'll need on this. So the next piece is, should these regulations apply to all types of property? It sounded like in the beginning, folks were saying yes, and we just need to understand when and what types of lights and what types of day. So Mayor Proton Maloney, you want to kick us off on the next portion about when should compliance with regulations apply and then what types of situations?
No, I really don't. I have other comments.
Okay, sorry. I thought that's where you were going.
That, that's great. I'll, I'll jump in there because I think it's good to get some ideas out there. You know, my, my feeling is, is that new construction, substantial remodels, absolutely. That's really easy to do. I think it's harder to do in the amortization period. I support this whole concept about dark skies. I am concerned about creating burden and doing, an artificial burden is what I would call it. I, I know not everybody's going to give my terminology there. But, you know, what Boulder did, and I believe Sherry was right, it was 15 years, I believe. That's a reasonable period, maybe 10 years. But to say it's two or three, I, I struggle with because it does, does cause some issues there. But I want to make sure that, and where it was actually going to lead us, Mayor. Councilor Dickinson brought up, oh gee, what are we doing with people who do what I call party lights? And, and including with that, I would say Christmas lights and things like that. We, we have to understand there's some element of that and that has to be appreciated here. You know, those are the kind of things that, you know, when I do Christmas lights are off at nine or whatever the time is, they're not on all night. So there's those kind of educational things. But as was pointed out in the staff report, we do have to appreciate the need for lighting for, you know, crime and safety. And we have to also appreciate the cost. I mean, some homes actually need a lot of lights around there and we need to appreciate those things. So I hope I helped you out with that direction.
You did. I, I think you framed it pretty well to move the discussion forward. So can I just see if folks agree generally on when there is new construction and substantial remodel, that we would have compliance with the ordinance? That seemed like something Mayor Proton Maloney laid out that could be agreeable to most folks. And if it's not, that's absolutely okay. And I'm not trying to shortcut meaningful debate around points that are disagreeable. Because that's how we get a better outcome is by bringing all these different points forward. So it looks like everyone was good with new construction and substantial remodel. And then the question on the amortization period remains. And then Mayor Proton Maloney brought up some good points of like, maybe we can address some of the, what we're now categorizing as party light issues as with time restrictions and things like that. Not to say you can't have them, but maybe, you know, there's a time of night when birds migrate and we can find that out from the Dark Sky Alliance. And we can, you know, understand why it's important, educate the community about why it's important, promote that first and then go into the compliance section. And then the other point that Mayor Proton Maloney brought up was around having allowances and clearly defining, you know, measures that people can take to protect their, their person and their property from crime. So if we can talk more about some of those other situations and like Councilmember Dickinson brought up some really good, like situations that we, he wanted to call out. If other folks have those, they want to talk about in residential, that would be useful too. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, I think the education component is going to be really key to this. I mean, we, like our house, we have a timed floodlight on our driveway, right? That I put in a couple of years ago when we first moved in. And so, you know, I think understanding sort of what kind of shielding might be necessary, whether the timer itself is enough. But I do think that there's, you know, there's going to be situations where, you know, the, the context, right? Like if you're, if you're backing up to open space, you know, are there sort of different, the different situations and different contexts that the lighting is in, in a residential area that we will need to, that we will need to consider. And to your, I think to the earlier points about, you know, party lights or Christmas lights, you know, those, those needing to be kind of considered appropriately. So, you know, I, I want to, I think the nuance to Councilmember Dickinson, Councilmember Lipton, Mayor Proton Maloney's points, I think all of those are good points. And we're going to have to really work through some of the details here, but I think the principle is sound. And, you know, for, for me, I think getting, getting everyone into compliance is important. And I think it's, you know, we, we should talk about what the, the right time period is. But I'm mindful of the, of the comment from, from the public that just mentioned that we should, you know, try to shorten the amortization time period. And certainly open to that, want to, want to sort of talk about what the right time period should be, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, so I have a couple of comments and a question on the topic of substantial remodel. I'm not sure what that means. So does that mean if somebody has a, a pool building permit, is it, I mean, how, how do you define that? Maybe Rod's already got an answer.
Yeah, yeah. So I, so I think we anticipate, I mean, we talked about trying to define it for this discussion and we thought it was probably best not defined, but we expected the question. And it would probably be, I mean, we could define it in a few different ways. The, some obvious options are maybe building additions of 50% or more new square footage, or you go by value of the building. But we probably recommend, you know, a square footage threshold. So if you're expanding your building by more than 50%, for example. But we would define that with the ordinance to what everybody thought was comfortable with.
Okay, so in the residential context, I would be supportive of perhaps a lower threshold. I don't expect a lot of people add 50% to their, you know, to their building. But, you know, maybe, you know, some, some threshold tying in with building permits or some, you know, maybe major electrical work or something like that. But, you know, you can think about that. You know, I'm struck that the PD has been educating us for many years in our community, the importance of having adequate lighting, particularly surrounding our residential buildings, how important it is for our safety and for them in promoting life safety. So I, I, I think it's important to hear from the, the police and fire people before we go too far along in this. And then on the issue of holiday lights or Christmas lights, I mean, you guys have been talking about Christmas lights. I think, you know, there are various holidays that people celebrate, various religious holidays and other types of holidays. And I think we need to be flexible enough to allow people to do a reasonable display of lights, you know, during whatever holidays they decide to celebrate, religious or otherwise. And maybe by having a reasonable time period before and after that particular holiday, that would be fine. But I, I, I think we got to show a little bit of flexibility, you know, to people of different, different backgrounds in celebratory practices on, on the issue of holiday type lighting. Thanks.
One other thought, if I may, is in my mind, kind of the amortization time period, as well as maybe the substantial remodel question could be kind of tied together. If your amortization period is relatively short, right? Your substantial remodel, you know, all of those are going to have to come into compliance anyway, within a matter of years. If you don't adopt an amortization model, then maybe you're more aggressive on kind of the trigger for bringing a property into compliance with dark skylighting for a residential. So I'm not sure if I'm, I'm clarifying that correctly, but I think, you know, if you kind of go aggressive on the amortization, you know, you're going to get them all there anyway. So just, just a thought too, I think if you're not looking at amortization, but you want to get folks into compliance, making sure that threshold is lower than potentially is, is an option.
Thank you very much. That's a good point. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you. Yes, I've got a couple of comments. One is that I do like the, the idea of really promoting this I, through education and also through incentives of some kind. I think that's the most effective and the kindest way to get a new policy implemented. I'm not sure on the amortization. If we're doing that, I think it needs to be a substantial time, at least 10 years. Because there are people who just can't do it in a year or two years or whatever the timeframe is. But in the meantime, there are ways to minimize the effects. So one is to time the lights and say, you know, exterior lights have to be off between this hours and this hour. The other thing is to Mr. Cooperman's suggestion. A light can be, even a spotlight can be angled sufficiently downward that the light doesn't leave, doesn't only not go up to the sky, but doesn't leave your property. So for example, with Councilman Brown's light on his driveway, the light doesn't have to even reach the sidewalk. So if the lights are, are, the track of the light doesn't go past, say, you know, past your property line or, or even past, you know, four feet from your house, which is where you want that security. Something like that could eliminate a lot of the excess light without impacting people's financial situation.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. I think those are a lot of good suggestions to go into the ordinance. Councilmember Lay? Councilmember Lay still?
Yeah, I'm sorry. For some reason, it wasn't turning off. All good points that have been made. I guess I just want to underscore a couple of things. I, I'm a, I'm certainly a big supporter of dark skies generally and for, for a whole host of reasons. And I don't need to go over those, but I didn't used to be. In fact, I remember, I, I think I've mentioned this to Cindy. I think Cindy has educated me probably more than anybody else, perhaps, until the staff put together its materials and stuff, but on this. And I, I think kind of made a convert out of me over, over time. But I think there's, there's always a danger when, I don't know, when aesthetics are concerned of, of people just assuming that everybody's going to be on board. And I think that there might be a lot of pushback if one, it's too aggressive. That is, if enforcement's too harsh, the standards are too high, the. That is, if enforcement's too harsh, the standards are too high, the. Uh, time period. Within which to come into compliance is too short. Um, and there are a lot of opportunities to to link. This sort of effort with sustainability issues. I mean. Cooperman's on the Sustainability Act advisor board, so he knows. Uh, those connections are really important. I think uh, just making the making our city a more livable place. These are themes that can be nicely tailored and the. You know, everybody loves great tips about how to deal with their property. So. Um, all those things I think we can, we can do. I'm uh, absolutely support what Deb Fahey's. Said about providing incentives. I think she said it's kind. I think it's just prudent, to be honest. Um, I think it is kind, but it's also a great way. Uh, I think, and it's more the Louisville way, not the Boulder way of. Dropping regulation on people and then beating them about the head and shoulders. So those are the suggestions that I guess I have as far as atmospherics there. They're qualitative primarily.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I'll try to uh, keep it brief. I I I think that um. What got me excited in the last couple of minutes is is the potential of. You know, uh, decreasing the amber station. Time linked with increasing the incentive, saying, hey, this is really important to us. We want to get this done in five years. So you want a new light? You want to improve your your property? You want to do your part for the community? Talk to the city. We have an incentive program to help you do that. We're trying to accomplish this in five years. Um, if we're not going to help a lot, then I think a longer amortization is good. So I think when Councilmember Fahy was talking about. Wanting to give people time, I that made perfect sense. And then and then I think she even mentioned instead, it was like, oh, well, that. Well, that could solve that, right? We could, we could get this done faster if we were sort of all pushing in the same direction. And so again, I'll, you know, I think I already stated at the beginning, I think there are. Moments that we don't want to overcorrect. When I walked down my street on Grant Avenue towards Memory Square Park, it's a really sweet block and everyone's front porch light is on. Um, and you basically cannot walk down our street any night. It's a, it's a si- signal of neighborhoodly um, gesture of like, we all have our front porch lights on and our block is lit. And we all have holiday lights. Um, and we all have Halloween decorations and we. We express that. And so, you know, those those lights are very important to us. It's a way that we express our community on that block. Um, so we don't want to, you know, make mistakes and it's like, oh, well, your light must be, you know, so I think we'll have ample time to. Be thoughtful about, you know, what a front porch light looks like versus top corner of your property shining down on your property. As a security light and what that looks like. Those are very different lights. And I think we'll have a great opportunity to be thoughtful about what we're. Um, what we're trying to mandate and what we're, what we're not trying to mandate. So. Um, yeah, that's all.
Thank you. So I'll just add my opinions to the conversation. I've been trying to summarize what other folks were saying. Um, so I think in the. Short, short run, I I think the education piece and the incentives is critical to try to get as much voluntary compliance, but having the ordinance as the backstop is. Abundantly necessary. So people know what we're targeting and why. But that education piece has to come and be very strong. Um, and you know, give people the opportunity to voluntarily come in and we'll have some kind of target like, hey, maybe we want. Sixty percent compliance, just with people finding our material. I don't, I don't know what the appropriate target is, but I'm sure through research, we can see where we might get on that. And then there's some portion of the community that. Will hate this, right? I mean, I think anything you do, there's different, very strong, different opinions. And since I've been on council, I've had a few people talk to me about increased lighting. For safety reasons, and I've had the vast majority of residents talk to me about the need for dark skies for migratory birds. That people like to walk at night and the lights actually like those charming porch lights. Some of the things you all have described as charming. Um, people have complained to me about that, like it makes it so you, you know, if you look at the light, then you can't see. When you go into the dark areas, but if it's just not so bright, then you can see all along. Like if you don't get that flash of light in your eyes, your eyes are adjusted, you can see just fine. Um, and I I've been walking home from city council for many years. I I got elected in twenty thirteen and our meetings sometimes run pretty late and I used to live even far farther from city hall. Um, and so I've been through a lot of different neighborhoods at night, um, coming home from city council and kind of feeling it. And. I'll say that our community feels very safe to walk around in at night and um. You know, we don't want to take away from that, but I think there are ways to do that and promote the dark sky from what I've seen, to have the appropriate fixtures, to not have the uplighting. Um, I I'm really keen on um, education, like other people have said, but I just have heard from so many community members that this is critically important to them. That I'm concerned if we go for like a twenty year amortization period, I would. Be more inclined to go with a shorter period, like a three year period where the first year, it's like free fixtures, education. You know, trying to get the big pushout and then you have a couple more years if you're a slow adopter, but what's taking you so long after that? I mean, you just turn your power off. Put a new light up, turn your power back on, done, easy. So um, I guess I'm on the side of, I don't think we should draw this out too long. And I do think we need to give staff direction around the amortization length of time. I think there was. Great consensus around education and incentives, but I think we need to give some more direction around the amortization time because I think there might be some. Difference of opinion in the group on where the the staff should head on that. So folks could weigh in a bit on that. Councilmember Brown?
Sure. Thank you, Mary. I appreciate it. I'm I'm gonna throw out five years. I think, you know, Boulder did fifteen. That seems much too long. I think five years seems like, especially with the appropriate incentives. Um, and education, um, I think five years would give most people. A good amount of time to to comply. So I'll, I'll start, I'll start the bidding in five years, I guess.
And just reminder to everybody that this is just to give staff initial direction. We'll have a full ordinance and there'll be more public process around it after, but just to help staff out, it's important to give them some framing on the front end. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Well, I'm lighting up my calculator, seeing how much the incentives will cost for three, five and ten years. Um. You know, I think it's really hard to just throw in, I mean, it's easy to throw a number out. Um, it's hard to know what the impact is when you do that. So ideally. I mean, so some of us have already done this, right? I mean, uh, there's already been incentive programs and so some of us are even. Even Costco, you know, they, some of their outdoor lights even advertises, you know, dark dark sky compliant and so forth. I guess I'm concerned about uh, forcing this too quickly. Um, so you know, I I I believe somewhere between five and ten years is something that I could support and I lean more towards ten. Thank you.
Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you. So you know, it's really hard to uh, suggest that amortization. Period without understanding better what changes need to be made. So I've I've looked at my neighbors over the last, you know, two or three years, many have replaced their porch lights. I. I have no idea based on this conversation, who's compliant and who isn't. And it'd be easier for me to say, oh, five years is fine if in fact, you know. People have already been, you know, installing the compliant fixtures. Uh, but to be honest, without more presentation from staff, I I. I'm really clueless about that. So I'm leaning more, I think, to where Maloney was, a longer amortization. Period, but willing to revisit it once I have better information to know what. What would be compliant, what isn't, and you know, get a better sense of how many. Fixtures and families would have to, you know, change fixtures, you know, based on what we're all talking about.
So those are great, great points from everyone. I just turned to staff and asked if that's enough direction on that. I mean. I think there's a general vibe from people that we're leaning toward, but I do think the request for data and information are. You know, very good requests, and I wonder if, you know, that additional information could help. Help us to better understand where we should set this and 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 we get that in from the community.
Yeah, definitely. I think we're, I think we're good on direction and I think we'll also need to work with the city attorney as far as setting an amortization period, as far as kind of the legal backing. Um, around how many years that needs to be. Um, as well as additional discussion around compliant type of light fixtures, kind of what portions of light fixtures render them noncompliant with dark sky and which ones are compliant. So what are those key elements?
Director Zakara, did you want to add anything else?
I didn't have anything to add other than, yeah, I think it's 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 good to get a general idea of your support for the concept. And then we would bring back much more information around what the appropriate time period is.
And that that would be based on some of the things Councilmember Lipton was bringing up, like what percent of people are already compliant, you know, how? How, just, I I don't know, those types of things that he brought up, I think would be really informative. Sure.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll bring back, I I think we've heard that uh, type of, you know, that request for information. And if anybody thinks of any other information, they think will be helpful, that would be great feedback as well, that. They think will help them. Uh, inform their opinion on the actual ordinance.
Great. All right. Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah, I mean, we didn't really get into some other issues on the residential. I think perhaps, um, you know, my, my sense is the. Using timers is important for certain types of lighting. If people want to have their, you know, holiday lighting or other types of decorative lighting. Then perhaps we should consider, you know, uh, putting those on timers. You know, when when it's practical to do that, which I think in most cases it would be. So I think that could, you know, people are generally turning off their lights at ten o'clock. I think that really can help mitigate the uh, overall issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Lipton. So um, that still leaves us with some good topics to discuss on this. And so commercial is one, but we put a pin in street lighting, which relates to residential and commercial. So we'll kind of talk about that for a minute. Before we go on to commercials. So just as a reminder, we're converting the remaining um, streetlights in the city to the LED lights. Um, through a CIP that council approved. And we've selected the warmer temperature and our, and all of the fixtures are dark sky compliant, but we do have Emily Hogan on. That can answer more questions. Um, she's managing the project around the street lighting. So if council members have specific questions around the streetlights, this would be a good time to ask them. And one, um, you know, thing that has come up from residents in the past is people have asked if we would consider, so right now, streetlights are located where the developers put them into developments. And um, so when they need to be replaced, they're replaced in those locations, but some community members have asked if we could remove lights or add lights. And it's brought up the question around if we should have a standard for spacing of streetlights or only have them at intersections or things like that. So there's quite a lot to talk about on streetlights. And this is your time to do so. Councilmember Lipton?
Sure. Um, so I'm a little confused. I I didn't know our replacement program included the residential districts. For streetlight fixtures. And to be honest, in the uh, you know, the subdivisions built out in the eighties and nineties. That have the legacy streetlights, that is by far the greatest offender of dark skies. And and what what people do with their, you know, um, you know, entry lights and, you know, all that. It it pales in comparison to the effect of the streetlights. So I I'd hate to go pester our residences on a, you know, a small residential light when in fact. You know, we have this larger problem and I don't know what the strategy is for dealing with that. And that's the first thing they're going to say. Oh, you want me to replace my little porch light? What are you going to do about the light shining into my bedroom? That's, you know, twenty feet high. So that's kind of the conversation I'd like to hear.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lipton. So um, if we could have, um, if I could ask the city manager to resend the memo to council, that's just on the street lighting program. It is confusing because there's the downtown lighting program and then there's the street lighting program and they all get, you know. Different treatments and things like that, but there is a a memo that we got around the street lighting. And um, it lets us know the type of fixture that they'll be replaced with and that they are dark sky compliant and they are the warmer temperature lights. Um, but I still think that Councilmember Lipton, your points are very good, like that even with all of those things. There will still be residents that feel the new fixtures are too bright and emit too much light, even though they are dark sky compliant and and that their fixtures are in the wrong places. And so. The question is, do we need to have a standard? Where we propose streetlights to be eliminated in neighborhoods where they're excessive? I mean, that's. The que- I, that's a question I have. Councilmember Lipton? Councilmember Lipton, you're on mute.
So I am. Thank you. Um, it's just that we have redundant light poles and fixtures. It's the type of fixture that was installed on the poles we have. And I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking out loud a little bit, this is almost a goose and gander kind of conversation that we're going to demand an amortization period for. Our residences to be replacing their residential lights, we should probably have a similar standard for the municipal lights. That the city owns, just for consistency purposes. And I'm not suggesting we got to replace poles. I'm not suggesting we got to redo the spacing. I mean, I think, you know. From a fiscal reality perspective, it's, it's really putting on new fixtures on top of what we have so that they're shielded. And.
Yes. Can we have, can we have um, Emily come on and just tell, I've tried to communicate what the what is happening, but maybe I've done a poor job of that. So if we could have Emily Hogan come on and just let us know what the new fixtures are like, that would be useful.
Sure. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so yes, as the mayor described, uh, we are starting a five year. Um, phasing process to replace the non Cobra headlights in the neighborhoods. So this does not include downtown. Downtown is being addressed separately. Um, just because we weren't. We were looking for additional options outside of what Excel was able to offer. Um, but for the neighborhood lights, it is just replacement of the fixture. We're not replacing the poles. It would be a much more significant cost if we were to. Remove poles and relocate. Um, but yeah, it's just replacing the fixture with a three thousand Kelvin. Um, dark sky compliant traditional fixture. And you'll see the traditional fixture in some areas of the city and we've, we're going with the traditional fixture in all neighborhoods. And we've put in our first order to Excel. For the twenty twenty one process, and we should have that um, installed in maybe late August to September. There's about, you know, two, three months. Delay to receive the materials. So, and I believe we're starting from the north end of the city and moving south over the next five years. So it's actually a really good opportunity to see the effects in place. Um, you you know, we won't replace the city entirely at once, but we'll do it over the next five years. So you'll be able to see kind of the difference between the older lights and the newer lights, and that may play into um, decisions regarding dark sky as well.
Councilmember Lipton?
No, Emily, I appreciate that information. I actually would look forward to seeing one of these once they're installed and uh, you know. As as additional information towards the decisions. But if you're saying every, every one of these will be replaced in five years, that's very good news. And it gives us, I think, better leverage to uh, have a slightly lower amortization period than if it's going to be a longer period of time.
And for folks who want to see what the traditional fixture looks like, the ones uh, in Mayor Protem Maloney's neighborhood are the traditional fixture. They don't have the. Color temperature that'll be installed or the LED, but they are the style of fixture that will be uh, installed. In the entire community. Any other discussion on streetlights? I continue to hear from residents that there's an interest in motion detectors on lights and I just want to let the community know that when we've approached Excel about that, they're just don't feel that the technology. Is readily available and we have a partnership with Excel on the lights, but we'll continue to follow up on that because it's a, it's very innovative and interesting, all the different things. That people are looking at doing with lights, um, from identifying, you know, crime and um, all all kinds of things, but the the technology just is not there with Excel energy as of yet. So that takes us to the next question. The staff of Post for us is around the commercial side. Uh, I'm sorry, is around dark sky supportive lighting standards in downtown? Councilmembers have comments on that? Generally, I think I heard people say that we would be looking for standards in all types of properties, commercial and downtown. I think the details just matter to us in all of these situations. Are folks in agreement with that? There are thumbs up all around. Um, so, and similarly, I think the similar comments will come up on the amortization schedules on the commercial side. Um, that we need that additional information that we talked about to understand how to set that. Um, are there other bits of research folks need from staff that they know about at this time? For us to move forward? Not seeing any, if anybody has any um, thoughts that come to you in the middle of the night, jot them down on paper and then go ahead and send an email to Director Ritchie. And you know, any additional information that we might need to be better informed, like collecting data or if there are specific ideas on education and outreach. or if there are specific ideas on education and outreach, that'd be great too. Director Ritchie, do you have enough information from us this evening? Are there any points you want us to go into a little more discussion around?
Um, no, I think you did a great job in the discussion and I really appreciate all of the direction. Um, I don't really have a time yet um for when we'll bring this back to you, but we will continue movement on it and look forward to the next step.
Thanks for all your work on this. We have a couple more comments. First one is from Councilmember Fahy.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just on the downtown area. Uh, how are we going to regulate business signs that are like, um, like the Empire's fluorescent sign that is not night sky compliant, but it's also historic and landmarked as something that can't be changed? So how will we deal with?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So generally within, you know, some communities exempt illuminated signage from their dark sky compliant, from their dark sky standards for lighting. You know, I think what we'll do is we, as you know, we recently adopted the sign code. We have illumination requirements for kind of time and, and when it needs to be turned off. But when we are reviewing best practices, we'll review options for any potential updates to the sign code as well as exemptions. Um, and so I, I think we'll have to look into that a little bit further. I would imagine that we can, you know, we certainly can carve out exemptions for landmark signs or iconic signs in our sign code or, you know, um, bring back a targeted amendment around sign illumination generally. So we'll have to evaluate kind of how our code stacks up against dark sky policy through this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney.
Uh, just a really quick comment. I note that Director Watson is on this. Uh, not that I need him to comment, but we do need to make a, at least a placeholder in our budget for discussion about incentives because it will be real money if we intend to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. Any other comments on this topic? All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Great discussion. And so we will take a five-minute break. It's 7:52, so we'll be back in five minutes to start our next topic. All right. It looks like we have a quorum back, ready for action. So that'll take us to our next agenda item this evening, which is discussion direction on city facility sustainability upgrade implementation. I have three staff members listed here that may be presenting to us. Director Kaur, Kevin Frey, our facilities manager, and Katie Baum, our sustainability coordinator. So whoever would like to take it away, please let us know what you'd like to tell us.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Uh, I'm Katie Baum, sustainability coordinator. Um, here with me tonight, I also have Director Kaur of Public Works to deep dive into any details you might need further um details on. We have a lot of information, so I'm going to try to keep it really high level and brief. Um, so in 2020, and in coordination with the committed municipal climate action goals, um, $600,000 was allocated in the 2021 budget for energy efficiency upgrades at municipal facilities with the goal of reducing energy consumption and decreasing renewable programming costs and utility costs. Um, additional context and details around current electricity consumption as well as two-day efforts can be found within Council Communications on Agenda Four. In June 2021, five major facilities underwent ASHRAE Level One audits. In addition, depending results of recent, of these recent Excel audit activities, staff performed an internal walkthrough of major facilities in early '21 um to identify opportunities for energy savings in city facilities. Um, we have attached a list summarizing the items for municipal facility energy saving efforts. Um, staff is continuing to complete the list. Um, by year end, we are anticipating full completion and incorporating additional upgrades noted as the Excel audit reports um come in and are provided. So there is a lot of information within um the update list. I want to stop here first and ask if you have any questions before we go into the renewable energy and then the fleet electrification piece as well.
So, um, Katie, you're just asking if we have any questions on the facilities upgrade list?
Yes, and any of the additional details that were provided.
Okay, great. Um, council members, you'll find in your packet on page 121, the list of um facility upgrades, if you haven't seen it already, and they total the six, close to the 600,000 that council allocated for efficiency upgrades. Looks like they're all on track and will make all of our buildings around town a lot more efficient, which is super exciting. Any questions or comments on those improvements that are slated? Thanks to the facility staff for getting all those done. That is a ton of work. Lots of different things had to be evaluated and changed to do all of that. So thank you so much. That's huge. And I think we need to make sure we let um Emily and Gloria know so that we can get something in the newsletter about it, just so people know all these improvements that were made to the city facilities. I think it's important that people know these things happen. Councilmember Fahy?
Thank you. Yes, I would just like to add my thanks to the Public Works staff. I think they've done a fabulous job uh with Katie, with helping with defining what we could do, what we should do, and then with Public Works actually doing it. Um, I think it's amazing what they've already accomplished. And I will say that going back in time, we've already done a lot of the low-hanging fruit items, like putting in LED bulbs in city facilities and things like that. Still have a long ways to go, but I think this is going to make a very big impression um in our sustainability for our public facilities. So I'm very happy with what's happening.
Thank you so much. All right, Katie, if you want to um continue on with your presentation, that'd be great.
Great. Um, so moving into municipal renewable energy piece. Um, as of March 1st, 2020, all municipal facilities operate on 100% carbon-free electricity through subscriptions to Excel Energy's Renewable Connect and the Wind Source Programs, which provides renewable energy credits or REX. Um, we do also participate in solar gardens and then onsite, onsite metering, which has already contributed in. The solar gardens we participate in do not provide the renewable energy credits. And I can further explain that if anybody has questions on that piece. In 2020, the cost of Renewable Connect and Wind Source subscriptions to cover 100% of the city electricity was approximately 74,000 um operating. Um, the vast majority of that did come from Wind Source Renewable Connect. Um, as many of you likely remember, when we are going through that, that process is a much lower premium. And so the Renewable Connect subscription that we have is approximately 5,000 out of that 70, 74,000. So the Wind Source is the vast majority of that. The amount is set to decrease by approximately 20,000 to 54,000 annually. Um, and, and that is, we are projecting that to continuously drop as Excel's certified renewable percentage actually increases. So this year alone, they've already jumped 10%, excuse me, 10% within the CRP. So we are anticipating that to just continue to decline and we'll see that operating cost continue to go down. So after an initial analysis, staff does still find that the city's Renewable Connect and Wind Source subscriptions, taking into account the continued, continued decline um that would be needed to cover, um, will be the most cost-effective and feasible to implement. Staff is continuing to evaluate opportunities for additional energy efficiency upgrades and onsite renewable and other renewable energies programming and will provide additional information and another update to City Council this fall. Um, so we will be looking at onsite um and doing a more comprehensive um cost benefit analysis across them all. And we'll be ready to present this fall for council. Um, on the renewable energy piece, before we get into fleet, again, they're, they're, they are uniquely their own topics. Um, so in order to kind of break them up and make them cohesive, do we, you know, are there any questions or maybe anything on the renewable energy piece that I can go into further detail or provide any additional information?
Um, just generally speaking, if, if we can keep the staff presentation combined together into one section, it allows me to take public comment so that, because public comment really influences council comments when people have things to tell us. I, I know we all take it really seriously, and so it makes it just hard to give all of our council comments, depending on what the public comment might come in as. Um, so just generally speaking, it's helpful if the whole presentation can go first.
All right, yeah, then I will go straight into fleet. Um, so with more renewable energy powering electricity grids across the country, and again, um, I'm sure this is not a lot of new information to many of you. Um, electric vehicles are part of the transportation solution in really quite drastically reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Um, and it really, you know, has an eye towards resiliency as well as just transition. Um, both charging infrastructure as well as electric vehicle purchasing and replacement needs to be considered in fleet electrification efforts. Um, as shown on the chart on page five, Agenda Four, many peer communities are beginning to dive deeper into fleet electrification from Go EV City resolutions, planning efforts, and formalizing vehicle replacement planning. Um, at this time, staff has not gone through a more formalized EV readiness planning process or evaluated vehicle replacement. Um, staff will, staff will recommend including funding for consulting services in the 2023-2024 budget process to develop a municipal fleet electrification plan. And in '22, we can, begin departmental conversations around vehicle replacement considerations and needs. Um, so staff recommends moving forward with the proposed upgrades as outlined in the staff's report um around municipal efficiency upgrades as well as renewable energy updating in the fall. Um, and will continue to explore future improvements in the most cost-efficient, cost-efficient and effective approach. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to go into any further details um and take feedback as well. I also have Director Kaur on the line as well.
Thank you so much. That takes us to our public comment period on this topic. If any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing that takes us back over to council discussion. Any questions or comments on the update? I just want to thank staff for focusing in on this as a council priority in our work plan for the year and a high priority for the community. So it's great to see the additional effort put into this. Um, in addition to, you know, Mayor Protem Maloney kind of flagged a budget item. It seems like there are a couple topics here that we need to flag. Um, if we, if we are talking about additional uh onsite solar, as was mentioned in the communication, we would need to have that discussion through the context of the budget. And additionally, um, I'm supportive of continuing a discussion uh in the shorter term, e- even though we do need to have a vehicle plan, uh, but to try to transition some additional vehicles over to electric vehicles in our municipal fleet um to get some early adoption going. I know we have, I think, one vehicle in IT that's transferred, maybe it's in facilities. We have one or two vehicles already, but uh if we can get some more vehicles transitioned over or eliminate vehicles altogether that aren't needed, I think that would be a step in the right direction. Councilmember Dickinson?
I beat uh Councilmember Fahy by a split second with my hand, which makes me really happy because I know how excited she is to talk. Um, I didn't obviously say much during the presentation. No one did. Um, but I, I just wanted you to know, uh, Katie Baum and, and staff in general. Um, it just, it feels like a nine-course meal. Every single little piece is like, oh, that's so great. Oh, that's so wonderful. Ooh, I really like that. Um, I'm really, and I, I, as a, as a, I don't say this often anymore, but as a new council member in this regard, I think, I think so much was done before my tenure. Um, and I just really want to thank everyone who preceded me and, and the staff that is in place and has been in place for this excellent, excellent work and excellent direction. And, and obviously you guys set some really um big goals and, and short-term goals. And, and we've met those and exceeded those in so many ways. I think it's just fantastic, and, and I, I really do hope as we look at our budget, look at priorities, that we continue to emphasize this. Um, there's no more urgent and pressing issue than sustainability and a great place to spend our money. And we're seeing, you know, benefits of that in short term. And um, you know, the investment that we're putting into these resources are coming back um tenfold if you consider all of the different impacts that, that are coming back, not just fiscal but environmental, obviously. Um, and not just environmental, but fiscal, um, depending on how you look at it. So very excited. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you so much for the work. And, and really just want to thank everyone who has put so much work into this over the years for allowing me to sit on council while the results has put so much work into this over the years for allowing me to sit on council while the results are coming in.
Council member Fahy?
Yes, thank you. I'll, I'll ditto everything that Council Dickinson just said. I think what's already been accomplished is amazing. I would like to emphasize that there are various efforts that you can put forth. And I think one of the biggest things that we can do as a city and in setting an example for our residents is in reducing the amount of energy that we use. Regardless of how it's generated, reducing the amount we use will make a huge difference. And then we won't have to have as many solar panels or as many windmills or whatever it is if we don't use as much electricity to begin with. And with the EV vehicles and chargers, I think that's kind of the same. I can say from my personal experience that it costs me approximately fifty percent of the price of gas to run my electric vehicle the same number of miles. And so it is an initial outlay of cash, but then all, over the course of how many years, you're, you're saving money every week, but you're not going to the gas station. And so there's a lot of ways to reduce your use. So if you're not using gas, you don't have to deal with any of the consequences of gas production or transportation or cost or any of those things. So I, I would just like to really encourage the reduction of your need for any kind of carbon at all. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council member Fahy. Mayor Pretam Maloney?
So just looking at the staff report, we're looking for recommendations. So I guess I would like to make a recommendation or make a, an action that we support the staff recommendation moving forward with the proposed upgrades as outlined in the staff report and to continue to explore future improvements in efficiency and renewable energies. And I want to thank Kurt, Kevin, Katie, and the rest of the staff. As I look through this list, obviously, all the buildings were thoroughly looked at and opportunities were identified and solutions were found, and we have project manager making all those things happen. So it's easy for me to say really quickly, but I know that's a lot of effort and I have great appreciation for what staff has done. And, you know, it was a year ago at our staff, at our budget retreat where this idea sort of came up, and we're here a year later and it's come to fruition. So I want to thank everybody involved.
Thank you. And so just because you've framed that as a motion, if I could get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Council member Brown.
Yeah, thanks. I, I just want to second what Mayor Pretam Maloney said. And also recognize the, the work of past councils. You know, it's taken us a long time to get to where we are, but also, you know, to, to, to pat staff, to pat staff on the back for, for really implementing it. And, you know, getting it done in, in the course of a year. It's not every project or thing on the work plan that we are able to clear in a given year. And so I appreciate that. You know, that they've really taken this one on, you know, wholeheartedly and, and really appreciate the work of everyone involved. So thanks for, thanks for being involved and really happy to support this effort and do what we can as council members to, to support staff.
Thank you, Council member Brown. And Katie, if you can, and maybe you can't, but if you can give us, you know, give us the update on the EVs. If you could give us a little preview into our potential drive event that might be happening into the city, I think that would be an exciting update.
Yes, definitely. So we will be hosting an electric vehicle ride and drive on Friday, September twenty-fourth from three to six PM at Steinbach Pavilion. We will be co-hosting it with both Superior and Lafayette. We thought it would be a great thing to do together as kind of an East County collaboration. And so we are also reaching out to our local cycleries to see if they'd like to bring out e-bikes as well. So we'll have a nice little event and be able to get some residents, and we're hoping to invite employees over as well to make it a little bit more robust and get people in some electric vehicles and have Denver Metro Clean Cities staff on hand to answer any and all questions that residents might have. And we'd love to see you guys there.
Awesome. Thanks, Katie. So there's just a lot of really exciting work going on, and really want to echo the comments from Mayor Pretam Maloney about the appreciation and thanks to all the staff that have put all the effort into this. All right, so seeing no other hands raised, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oh, Council member Dickinson, did you have a question? Or all those in favor, please say aye, aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. And that takes us to our next agenda item this evening, which is an update, and it's on the City of Louisville American Recovery Plan Act funding. And I apologize, my packet turned sideways on me, and so I don't see which staff members presenting.
Mayor and City Council, this is Megan Davis, Deputy City Manager. Good evening. I'm going to keep my video off, and I hope that I don't cut out on you. I am having some intermittent internet disruption, so I just hope this goes smoothly. But I don't have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm just going to go through some of the highlights tonight. We want to have initial, an initial discussion with you about the Federal American Recovery Plan Act funding. And just give you a little more details about the funding, the act itself, the act itself, and the, the potential uses of these funds here in the city. So the ARPA, I'm going to refer to it as ARPA. The ARPA has provided direct distributions of funding to local governments for COVID relief. This funding is intended to provide support for local governments in response to the impacts of COVID nineteen and for efforts to contain COVID nineteen. The city did receive coronavirus relief funds in two thousand and twenty, and in your packet is more details about how we use the city's distribution of funds. That was about nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we received for those funds, and the details about that are in your packet. We are considered a non-entitlement community with ARPA, and as such, we received a population-based distribution of funding that's dispersed through the Department of Local Affairs. Our total distribution is five million, two hundred and thirty-two dollars, but ninety-six dollars, half of which was received already this year, and half will be dispersed in two thousand and twenty-two. So the act itself provides some general guidelines for the use of the funding, including things like providing substantial infusion of resources to meet pandemic response needs to rebuild a stronger, more equitable community as the country recovers. And it also highlights that these resources lay the foundation for a strong equitable economic recovery, not only by providing immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses, but also by addressing systemic public health and economic challenges that have contributed to the severe impacts of the pandemic. So it's, it's pretty broad and far-reaching and intended to leave some, you know, lasting impacts on the community. Similar to the coronavirus, the coronavirus relief fund, the detailed rules of the expenditure of the funds are governed by the Treasury, the US Treasury Department. And we have received interim guidance, which provides some details around how the funds can be used and accounted for. We are not sure when the final guidance will be provided to us, hopefully in the next couple of months. And that will give us, you know, just a little bit more information about some of the lingering questions we have about how the funding can be spent. But there are four key buckets of eligibility that are included. One is to respond to the public health emergency. This would include an economic impacts, which would include assistance to households, businesses, nonprofits, or impacted industries. Number two is to respond to workers performing essential work during the public health emergency. Number three is for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction of revenue due to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. And I'll get in a little more detail about that. And the fourth is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So those are kind of the four main areas where the funding is intended to be directed. So we have been reviewing the guidance and considering potential uses of these funds. Director Watson, who's on the call also this evening, has provided a preliminary analysis around our revenue loss calculations. Again, this is based on what we know with the interim guidance, and so we expect there will be additional information that will inform this calculation moving forward. On page one hundred and forty-five of your packet, you can see the details around the revenue calculation. But it's important to note that based on the interim guidance, the city can't simply reimburse ourselves for the amount of revenue, revenue reduction or revenue losses. The, the ARPA distribution, if the ARPA distribution is less than the calculated revenue reduction, which may be the case in our circumstances based on our initial analysis, we do have quite a bit of latitude as to how the ARPA funding can be spent. We would still be required to demonstrate that our expenditures are consistent with the definition of government services, which is in your packet, and it's quite broad. It basically allows for maintenance, funding the building of infrastructure, roads, modernization of cybersecurity, hardware, software, protection of critical infrastructure, health services, environmental remediation, police, fire, and other public services. So again, it's, it is quite broad. So we have, as I said, it's kind of taken an initial look at the guidance and started to identify just some areas of investments which could be consistent with the eligibility and which are currently planned for or that reflect existing or anticipated needs at the city. These include areas like behavioral and mental health services, small business assistance or other business assistance, community recovery assistance, revenue loss, and then utilizing those funds for associated government services and investments in infrastructure such as water, sewer, or broadband. There are also some less defined investments that the city could consider, which could make an impact related to recovery. These could include things which would be eligible, eligible, such as affordable housing investments, infrastructure investments, investments and efforts to close the equity gap around recovery or facility infrastructure improvements. These could be developed further through additional conversations, both here at the city and with council and also with any relevant partners. So in addition to the funds made directly available to non-entitlement, non-entitlement communities, there are numerous other funding sources in ARPA. The state of Colorado, did you lose me? Okay, good.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. That's, that means my screen is just freezing. I'm glad to hear that you can hear me. So there are numerous other funding sources through ARPA, and the state of Colorado General Assembly also passed COVID nineteen. So, you know, right now, there's a lot of COVID recovery money, and we're really trying to get our arms around what some of the other sources in addition to our direct local distribution is. We're working with neighboring jurisdictions who are starting to do kind of this analysis and assessment and really looking at what our local needs might be and also what regional needs might be that we could partner with other organizations. I also wanted to note that the county is undertaking some public engagement efforts. They've hired some consulting services to help do countywide public engagement efforts to get some feedback from communities within Boulder County on what post-COVID needs might be out there that, that we might not be aware of. We have also posted for a recovery grants manager staff position, and this person will assist with the administration of recovery grants, and we're hoping they'll be able to help us with both the ARPA funding as well as some of these other recovery grant opportunities that are out there that we could pursue through both our, other ARPA, kind of, they're calling them sort of tributaries of funding or state recovery funding. So I just want to mention, we, we haven't developed formal principles around the expenditure of these funds, but we have learned some things from our coronavirus relief fund process. And so some of the things we've talked about internally with staff are things like, you know, of course, maintaining fidelity to the eligibility requirements, being aware of the ease of administration of projects and accounting. I'll say we also learned a lot from our FEMA funding experience with the two thousand and thirteen flood. Being mindful of the ease of reporting and auditing with how we use the funds and then leveraging the most appropriate funds for the needs. So, you know, we have our local pot of money, and there are all these other dollars out there. So really being, you know, mindful of if there are opportunities to access other funds that are appropriate for needs versus using the local distribution so we can stretch our dollars as far, far as we possibly can. And then also leveraging existing partnerships and program infrastructure. For example, not putting in place, you know, new programs where they may already exist. And in fact, a lot of programs were spun up during COVID, and to what extent we can use the administration, administrative infrastructure of those programs to, you know, continue to provide funding would be much more efficient than starting kind of from scratch. So no decisions need to be made, you know, at this time. This is kind of an initial discussion, but I'm happy to open it up for discussion, council discussion, and would love to hear some of your initial inputs around this federal funding.
Thank you, Director Davis. And I'll turn it over to members of the public who would care to comment on this agenda item this evening. Would any members of the public care to comment? Seeing now that takes us back to council comments and questions. I just have one question before we dive right in. Director Davis, can you talk to me about the magnitude that you feel that we would, the magnitude and the likelihood of success that you feel we would have in accessing some of these other types of funding that you're talking about from the state and federal government?
You know, I don't know that I can speak to, to the magnitude. We, we don't, we don't have our arms around what all of those funding sources are, what the eligibility requirements are for those funding sources, you know, what the criteria might be for them. So I think when we have a little bit more information, we're really hoping that our, you know, grants recovery manager is going to help us with that, digging into a lot of those grants. So I, I, I'm sorry, I don't think I can speak to magnitude. I do think when we talk about, you know, potentially some of the community, community needs, business needs, there are other pots of funding out there that we could, you know, maybe work with regional partners on, on getting more funding that would benefit Louisville residents who have needs related to COVID that may or may not flow through the city.
Thank you. Yeah, I just am trying to understand. So I was listening very closely on your ease of administration and reporting piece, and like, there are certainly things that obviously fit in that we could make it easier or harder on ourselves. So I was trying to understand the grant manager position and trying to understand the return on investment in that position. Like, let's say we picked one project and applied the funding all to that. It doesn't seem like that person would have very much to do as a full-time position unless, of course, they could be very successful in getting these other grants. So I'm just trying to get a better handle around that part of the conversation.
I think there are a lot of grants in, in many, many different areas, everything from, you know, funding for things like, you know, parks and, and trails to transportation, funding to human services funding. So I think there's a pretty broad range of funding. I, I just am not sure yet of the, you know, the feasibility, or I should say the eligibility piece around us are receiving a direct distribution, but I think even if we can't secure numerous additional direct grants, I think there's a role to be played with the regional partnerships and making sure that we have someone to, you know, advocate and work with the other recovery managers around, you know, get, getting more money flowing to Louisville and some of those other areas.
Thank you for that clarification. Mayor Pretam Maloney, start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy City Manager Davis, once again, very nice presentation. The report was too long for me, though. No, I'm just kidding.
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. That, so I have to do a little bit of a story to see, to, to sort of lead into what I want to say, but when I heard ARPA, I was like, oh, that was, you know, University and Research Networking System from nineteen seventy-three, but no, they reused an acronym. So, which leads me to my perspective is this is what is considered to be the good old days. We're, we're being given a lot of money, and we have as a council responsibility to be able to use that money in the most effective way. So it's the good old days because you always think back when, you know, when it was better than it is today. But you know, this is a great opportunity for us, and I appreciate the work done by Director Watson on the, the reduction in revenue related to COVID nineteen. And I appreciate the work done by Director Watson on the reduction in revenue related to COVID nineteen, which gives us justification for the funding. That's sort of the revenue side. On the usage side, to me, the investments in infrastructure absolutely should be the way we use this as much as possible. And when I think about that, I near the end of the report, I guess they're listed at the bottom of page three fifty-one. There's a bunch of them related to to water, wastewater, broadband, infrastructure, middle mile, wireless city facilities, all important things. We also have farther up, there's the possibility of maintenance of roads. And so Deputy City Manager Davis, the question I had was, it was maintenance of infrastructure, including roads. Does that mean paving? Does that mean building roads? Do we know what that definition is?
We, we have some language that was in the FAQs that I have provided, but we don't have more, you know, kind of developed descriptions around that. So the description that I included in the packet is really what we've seen in the Treasury guidance. So.
Okay, well, so, you know, my perspective is, I think we have a lot of opportunities. I'd like to see it as long-term investments for something and not trying to really pay for things that are that I would consider be more operational. Another question I had Deputy City Manager Davis was the small business assistance. Is that a new assistance package we would have to implement? Or would that be something that we could, and this may be the wrong word, reimburse ourselves for previous assistance packages?
You know, I think it would be something new. I think we, I don't think that we can reimburse, we may be able to reimburse for some unspent that we didn't submit for the coronavirus relief fund. So I'm not, I'm not sure what the requirements will be around that. I don't know, I don't know if Kevin, if you have seen anything on that or if maybe Megan Pierce has, but I am not of the, I think if it wasn't covered in coronavirus, we may be able to, but I'm not sure.
This is Kevin. I think all the expenditures have to be incurred. I think it's after March first, maybe March thirty-first. I'd have to look it up.
March third.
Yeah, because we can't really take a look back on this one and reimburse ourselves. We need, this has to be for future expenditures.
Okay, so with regard to, so you're talking about March third of twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
So if I look under revenue loss, we have listed the rec center. And would that, so would that be loss revenue that we would calculate for March third, twenty twenty-one forward?
No, the revenue loss has already been calculated. There's some very specific formulas where you do a look back. And then you, you look at, you look at that for each year through so many years. But once we hit that seven million dollars of loss, that seems to cover us for the rest of the period. So what we're saying is that we're probably covered for the revenue loss. Now, once you have that revenue loss defined, or once you meet that standard, then you can apply this, you, there's much more flexibility to where you can apply the grant. But the grant is applied toward expenditures that occur in the future up through twenty twenty-four.
Okay, all right. Well, I just, thank you very much, Director Watson. I just want to reiterate what I said. I'd like for us to work very hard for this to be investments in infrastructure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Brett Tamaloni. And just for folks following along the definition, Director Davis, can you tell us what page the definition of government expenditure was on that you were talking about?
Yes, let me just pull it up here.
Just so everybody can take a look at what you were talking about?
Yeah, I'm going to go back to the council communication. It's in the council communication. I was looking in the facts, too. It's on page one forty-four. Starts on page one forty-four. It's bold. It says government, government, government services can include, and then it includes that description there.
Thank you for that. Next up, we have Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Hey, I want to second what Mayor Protam was saying about this particular funding. I think investing in infrastructure is some of the best investment that we can make. This is one-time money. And, you know, I mean, on the whole, I think what we on the Finance Committee have been seeing is that, you know, our city is in decent financial shape relative to where we could have been under the pandemic. And so, you know, using it for, using this money for operational expenditures doesn't make nearly as much sense to me as, you know, large infrastructure investments that we wouldn't be able to make otherwise. So whether that's transportation or some of the water sewer projects that that we've been talking about, I think that's, that's definitely where my, my head would be at. And I think, I think that's, it's a really unique opportunity. And it's quite frankly, a significant amount of money for us to be able to spend on those things, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you. I'm a little conflicted on this topic. You know, gone through this a little bit with my, with my business as well, with applying for grants and things like that. Our, our net position as a city has increased through the pandemic. And so the, the idea of receiving recovery funds because our revenue went down, we dealt with this when we were trying to do small business grants. You know, revenue decreased and then expenses decreased even more and that position increased. And so claiming, you know, a loss of revenue as a, as a need for recovery feels inauthentic to me. And of course, turning down funds is insane. And so that's how we, you know, deal with things with our business and personally. And, and so try, trying to think about, you know, if we are to receive these funds, what is the best use of these funds considering the fact that we are fully funded as government currently? We have a healthy balance and we are able to meet our needs. And yet there are people who, you know, are having trouble, you know, making their mortgage or paying their rent or buying food or paying their utility bill. Or people can't afford to live in our town or can't afford their commercial rent or what have you. And trying to think about, okay, well, if we can get these substantial funds, what is the absolute best use of these funds when the impact of COVID is so disproportionate in our community? And so can we, you know, I would, I would hope that we could emphasize using, using these funds as thoughtfully as possible to have the greatest impact on the people that were impacted the greatest by, by the recession and by COVID and by the mental health and physical health and financial health of this moment. And so, you know, this feels like a huge windfall. And I know with my, with my company, we went through that same issue of like, okay, well, we're getting these, getting these grants because we deserve them. We've checked every box. But things aren't as bad as we thought they were going to be, and we still have this money, so we can give it back and just reject it. Or we can use it in ways that are really thoughtful and useful in our community. So I would, I think there are infrastructure projects are incredibly important, and I think that we have planned well for them. And I think that we are organized for them, and I would like to emphasize using these funds on more unusual endeavors, especially housing, affordable housing, utility forgiveness, things like that. That, that's what, I think that's what this money is for. So, you know, what, what would it cost to erase every delinquent utility bill in the city of Louisville? That's, I think that's a fantastic use of grant money for a pandemic recovery as opposed to decreasing the cost of maybe when the underpasses are planning on or updating a road. And so I, I don't mean to be controversial, and I don't mean, I feel if you're Three Amigos fans, I'm a little Ned in the bed saying, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to fund an orphanage. If reference is lost, I apologize. But I just, I think that's the right, the right use for this money, and I'd like to think about how we can, how we can do that. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All my thoughts, I think that there's a lot of actual overlap between, in the Venn diagram between all the comments. So like, for example, if we use it for a, a road infrastructure project that we're planning on bonding for, and we don't have to raise property taxes, that helps with affordability. If we use it for the windy gap project and, you know, we make a huge payment for the chimney hollow out of this funding instead of having to raise water rates over time, that helps with affordability for everyone in the community. And it does help people who are disproportionately impacted because it keeps their bills lower. So I think by strategically investing in infrastructure, we can keep people's costs down in the short term where we would have had to increase them otherwise. So I do think there's overlap there in ensuring that we're providing the services that we're charged with providing as a municipal government, like, right? It, it would be great, you know, I'm sure the fire district would be interested. I'm sure the school district would be interested, but each group has their own funding streams, their own grants to apply for their own charge to look after. And so, you know, when I'm looking at what we're charged with caring for water is incredibly important. If we, you know, have a big lead pipe problem in the city, you know, we'd go after that, but we're doing smart meter replacement. Well, that actually has caused people's bills to go up. So we could put this towards smart meter replacement. But I don't think putting it toward an existing infrastructure program doesn't meet the principles that you've outlined, Councilmember Dickinson. I just think we have to do a good job of articulating how and ensuring that it does follow those principles. But I think by using it for infrastructure and keeping people's costs down, it also addresses the issues with ease of administration and recording. Because right now, you're saying things like windfall, and this is a ton of money, and it sounds like a lot. I have some experience from living through the FEMA reimbursement, and like, we got three million dollars for county road bridge. And so we kept saying, oh, we don't want to spend any money on county road bridge because we're going to get this federal money. So it took something like six years to complete county road bridge. Whereas if we would have just built it for ourselves, we could have done it in six months or something. Like, I mean, Coal Creek is small enough that people can jump across it from one side to the other. And it took us some astronomical amount of time to complete it because we got this quote-unquote free money. And then we had to be audited on it, and then we had to follow all these additional rules that made the design much more complicated. Where, where this sounds like a large amount of money, it has a lot of strings attached to it, and we have to follow up with a lot of paperwork. And like, I think we, I think we just finished FEMA closeout on our flood. It's twenty twenty-one, and that was in twenty thirteen. So you can imagine we'll be into some other pandemic in the future, and the staff will still be working on pandemic closeout of these funds. So that the easier we can make this, there really is a benefit to that in administering it and ensuring that the dollars can go to the project itself rather than to the administration of the funds, if that makes sense. So I just, I think we have to consider all of these different factors, but I don't at all discount the points that you've raised, Councilmember Dickinson, about. Like, should we have gotten this money at all when I was listening to the debates in Congress? Really, the Republicans were raising a lot of concern around giving this money to cities at all. And the concerns were like, cities don't need this, there's disproportional impact, like, everyone doesn't. And, and the argument that won out of the day was that it was going to be a population-based distribution. So that's how it was done. And so now here we are. So I think we just have to make the best of the program and follow the intent of the program. And that includes investing in infrastructure and municipal services and modernization of cybersecurity and all of those types of things. So I think as long as we follow the rules and we're in good standing, I think we can move forward with our heads held high. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm, I'm going to kind of agree with everything that's been said already. I think, as you mentioned, there is, there are two sides to any kind of investment that we make. And sure, it's going to help our bottom line if we use it for water, for example. But it is also going, in the long run, going to help the residents' bottom line also. Their bills will be lower. And so, you know, maybe that will assist them. My one addition I would say is to add on to Councilor Maloney's suggestion that we look at broadband because, for a couple of reasons, I think it's an important asset to have in the city. And it's important to be able to offer that to all of our residents at, at a kind of a comparable level. So, and this pandemic, in my view, is not over yet. We're going to be getting more variants, we're going to be getting different outbreaks, whatever. I don't think it's done yet. And so we need to be sure that we're ready. When, you know, schools go back in session, our kids are going to be able to learn from home. And a lot of that has to do with whether or not they have internet access. And the, the poorer communities are the ones that are least likely to have the ability to log on and work from home or to learn from home or whatever the issue is. Or, you know, mother has to stop working because she lost her job because the restaurant closed or whatever. I just think that computer access is critically important to everyone right now. And that should be one of our top infrastructure priorities.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Lipton?
Well, I guess I find this to be a fascinating conversation. I agree with a lot of the things that were said, and I disagree with some of the things that were suggested. And maybe I'll start with that list. I, I really have concerns about using this money towards our utility, our utility fund infrastructure. And, you know, I think, yeah, it'd be easy to write checks to the utility fund. Utility fund is supposed to operate and, and balance on its own bottom. And we're not really supposed to be commingling, you know, to the extent we can avoid commingling funds between the general fund and the, and the utility fund. And I think this was intended for the general fund use. And I think if you basically use it to buy down the rates on the utility fund, what you're really doing is rewarding people that water more or use more water, including our, you know, it's not going to be just the residential, it's going to be the industrial, commercial. You know, I think what you're going to end up doing is distorting the rate. And I think we've intentionally tried to keep the rate market-based, but, you know, to incentivize people not to use more water than they need. So by just throwing millions of dollars in the utility fund, I think it distorts, you know, the economic paradigm that we've established in the utility fund. And the utility fund has not suffered at all during pandemic. Utility fund has done extremely well, actually, in, in most, in, in most regards. So, you know, to me, that's not going to be a high priority. I think there are infrastructure projects we should be doing as a city, certainly broadband, you know, is one of them. The middle mile that we've been talking about for years could be another one. I think what I haven't heard in this conversation, and, and maybe this is something staff can take a look at, maybe even bring back, is we haven't talked about our strategic priorities as a city in alignment with this, you know, windfall of dollars. So I, I think I would like to be able to make sure that whatever we invest in is consciously mapped to what our priorities are and that we've stated where our goals are. And really, this has been a kind of a random haphazard conversation. People throwing ideas and projects and, oh, let's spend on this, let's spend on that. We really haven't had a discussion about the alignment with our strategic priorities, and I think we need to do that before we just go spend the money. You know, I, I, I think human services is certainly something we should be looking at. I, I agree, most of this should be used for investment purposes, the extent we can. But if we have gaps in human services and, you know, the needs of people that are struggling, if they are in our community, certainly we ought to be looking at some of these funds to aid that. I kind of, you know, precedent to agree that, you know, we should just write off every delinquent water account. I mean, that, that to me is a blunt force instrument that, you know, policy instrument that, you know, may not be necessary. You know, we can probably assist people that really do have issues and needs based on a need-based analysis. But just to say we're going to, you know, give free water to anybody who hasn't paid their bill, I think goes further, I'd want to see. So, you know, I'm looking for a balance of. give free water to anybody who hasn't paid their bill, I think goes further, I'd want to see. So, you know, I'm, I'm looking for a balance of investment. Investment consistent with our strategic priorities and perhaps carving out some to the extent we can for, you know, finding the gaps in our human services that we can support and try to, you know, put some money towards that, too. I'm a little concerned about, you know, I, I think like the mayor said, spreading this too thin. I, I mean, you know, from an accounting perspective and a project perspective, it might be easy to direct, you know, more funding into a small number of projects. So we don't get into a huge cost for administration and distribution. I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure I see that. So I, I think that might be a filtering tool we might use also in deciding where this money goes. So anyway, so I agree with a lot of which been said. I disagree with a lot of what was said. So, thank you.
And I'm gonna go to Councilmember, just because he hasn't had a chance on this topic yet. Councilmember.
I was looking forward to hearing what Councilmember Dickinson was gonna say before me.
I am, I am also looking for it. But everybody gets a turn.
No, I appreciate that. This is, it's been an interesting conversation. I, you know, one of what is it that keeps coming to my head, the sort of income effect, the leisure effect from Economics 102 that I took in college years and years ago? I guess a couple of thoughts. You guys have covered most of the points that I would have made. I think I'd like to return to this subject after, after this conversation and perhaps some additional staff input. But I think it'd be nice to be able to tell people in our own community where this money is going and to have it be in, you know, discreet, extremely worthwhile. And I don't know if the word is newsworthy. But these funds are, are really important. And I, I think probably there is some balance. There's always a need for some balance between in, investment. And I think we've heard a lot about, well, you know, a soft, whatever the soft definition of infrastructure might be in some of the other areas that I think Councilmember Dickinson and other people talked about. But I, I like Councilmember Lipton's thought is, you know, that it's a good, it's a good thing to be aligning what we're going to do with the money with our priorities and to look for places where we can, you know, point to this money as really making a difference, a tangible difference in something that we're going to do. Otherwise, we're filling a gap that we we know our city has because of, of the pandemic we've just suffered through. And perhaps, you know, there's, it's a question of, you know, having a smaller amount for some of the perhaps softer infrastructure or more sort of social social, social benefit or trying to think how to describe it, the human services kind of issues. But I think it would be a good thing to be trying to, to serve our own strategic goals and keeping that in mind before we run off in every other direction. But it would be nice, you know, it, it really would be nice to be able to tell people that these funds are really working in our own community in very tangible, specific ways. And not just that, you know, we got a million bucks and we spent it. Here. Put a little here and a little there, I think, trying to target that is a good thing. So that's my comment.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Dickinson.
Appreciate it. I think the, the piece that I would add, just didn't mention this. I think the Grants Manager for Administration Recovery Grants is really important. You know, I mean, all, all my previous comments aside, you know, having someone who can help us understand where we can get those funds and then use them will pay for itself. I think if they, if they help us get one extra grant, it will be worth it likely. It's not, doesn't sound like a full-time, permanent job, just a job to help our staff who isn't otherwise equipped. This is a very new thing. To, to understand all those different opportunities. And I think, I think we've lost out on some opportunities in this first eighteen months. Because it's a lot to take in and all those different possible grant sources and, and programs. And so I think that that would be a really good use of our money. Again, in the theme of the, the rich getting richer, if you have the funds to hire someone to go get the funds, you're going to get more funds. And so that's something that our community can afford to do. And then I hope that we get those extra funds and use them in a really thoughtful way.
Thank you, Mayor Portamani.
Thank you. I just want to add my support of some things I've heard from my colleagues. Council Lipton talked about, you know, really trying to align with priorities. I think that's absolutely something we should always do. So I think if we could come up a way we articulate that and then relating to Councilor Lay's thoughts, we should be able to explain how we're spending the money based upon the priorities of the city. So I think that all reinforces it. And then Councilor Dickinson really talked about human services, you know, taking care of those who are in need. I, I'm in full support of that. I think we need to rely upon the programs that we have. You know, for utility bills and so forth, we have a terrific program working with Sister Carmen. And, you know, I'm not going to go through all those. But if those programs need additional funding, then we should step up to help with those. But I believe those programs really serve a purpose of identifying who is in need and who needs help. And we can make sure we do appropriate funding that it goes to the right place. So I think this has been a really good discussion. I hope that this is enough for staff to come back with, you know, a framed discussion based upon this, which I think was a very rich discussion. So I thank all of my colleagues for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Yeah, I, I want to just say how much I appreciate the spirit of Councilmember Dickinson's comments about human services. I think, you know, I think many of you know that like my day job is essentially human services and has been for many years. And you know, one of, one of the things that I, I find it very, you know, we as a council over the last year, really since, since I've been on council, we have really pushed to make sure that we have, you know, increased the availability of our sort of, I'll call them safety net programs, if you will. Utility utility assistance and other assistance that we provide. And I think that's been the right, the right way to go. I think, you know, from a, from a long-term sustainability perspective, it's difficult to use kind of one-time funding for human services-type programs because that need is often there every year. And so what do you do when the money goes away? So I think that to, to Mayor's point earlier, using this money to buy down some of these future infrastructure costs that could lower costs for everyone. Well, and especially those who have been hardest hit, you know, is, is really a, a, a great way to, to spend the money. And anyway, so I'll, I'll be, that'll be sort of where my head is at, is on sort of long-term infrastructure improvements.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I should have said this before. But I, I think when we're talking about how well our city is doing, and, and we've done well, I think that's financially, you know, and we're on solid ground and we have been for a long time. And a lot of, I generations and generations of council members are, and in great residence and a whole host of things are responsible for that. And it never stops housing values that keep going through the roof. But one of the thoughts that did occur to me in, in considering this issue is there, there are people who are, are not or haven't enjoyed the benefits of the last year. There's no question about that. And there may be people systemically in our community that aren't. And I think I, I am looking forward, as I know the rest of you are, to the report that the, the Equity Task Force is going to, to produce to us. Because I think there will be some interesting ideas there, too, that may be good to consider. And they may well be infrastructure, you know, investments that we can, that we can be looking at. But I will look forward to that, too. I, I, I think we ought to keep that in mind from a timing standpoint. Because there may be some really good ideas that we might glean out of, out of that.
Thank you, everybody, for the really good discussion. So it sounded like a lot of synergy around infrastructure investment, but definitely bringing it back to our strategic goals and understanding, you know, what types of funding could align with the goals. And then figuring out how we can in a meaningful way, impact hu- human services where appropriate. And I think part of the complication around the discussion is really, we haven't heard from the county for quite a long time. The county is responsible for housing and human, human services for our whole county. And we haven't heard from them an update on how they're doing in providing our residents those services and residents of the surrounding communities. So maybe we could reach out and get the most recent update from them on, you know, things like food assistance, SNAP programs, housing voucher programs, and just see how much utilization there is in our community and how much gap there is. You know, we're, we're closer with the things that we directly provide services on, of course, because that's what we're directly working on. But I think it would probably be a good time to get at least a written report from them. And maybe Councilmember Brown, you could bring it up for us at the Consortium of Cities just to find out where we are on those types of things and see if the county wanted to present back. I would want to turn to Megan Davis to find out if this was actually in that direction. Because I do think we had a good, very good, robust conversation. But I'm not sure if we hit all the points that staff was looking for this evening.
Sorry, I lost you for a minute there. But, but yes, this, this direction was incredibly helpful. I think we heard, you know, kind of what some of the general priorities are. I think we will be expecting to get additional treasury guidance. And so that's going to also help determine eligibility. Again, we'll be looking into other other potential funding sources through ARPA and what the eligibility is there. So, you know, I think as we get more of that eligibility, we can, and, and through, you know, through the budget process, too, we can come forward with some considerations for you, some potential options that are refined a little bit more based on this info we heard tonight.
Thank you so much. And just one request would be on the Grants Manager position. It seems like everyone, except for maybe myself, was fully on board with that position. And so I just wonder if we could have some kind of reporting around that. I'm just not, I would just love to understand what benefit we get from that position over time.
Sure. Yeah, we can, we can share with you kind of just summaries about what they kind of, what they're working on, what they're doing. And and of course, what opportunities we're able to, to capture through that.
Thank you. That, that would be great. Any other comments on this topic from folks? All right, not seeing any. Thank you very much for all the work. And so that takes us to our meeting this evening, and we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.